Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September ninth, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much. All right, good evening, everybody. The time is 5:32. We're here for the work session. We've got four items on work session. So the first one is discussion of our agenda. Anybody have any questions? I know that there were some questions posed that Kent answered today via email.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment on concern agenda item B. Just a couple of answers that Kent was kind enough to share with me. That seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. This just for the flat roof portion of the roof, so it's not the total roof. And we got about nine years out of an expected fifteen to twenty years. And the warranty for installation was for two years, and the installer is out of business right now. So that's just a comment for the benefit of people listening in.
Okay.
Can I go on?
Sure.
So agenda item G for the fire station, that's six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred, sorry, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
So you said D?
G.
Okay, G. Thank you.
G. That amount is about eleven point seven percent of the preliminary construction estimate, which is about five point nine to six point one million dollars. The actual estimate would come up after the design is completed, is what I can think of. Thank you. Those are the only two comments I have.
Typically, we, just as a rule of thumb, you budget about, or expect about ten percent of the project. Anybody else? Jim?
I was gonna ask for an executive session on item S.
Okay. I'm gonna have to excuse the audience while we convene into executive session. I'll be back outside, and I need to go and outside outside again. Been requested to enter into executive session during the work session. So we are in closed session, in work session at 5:35. Thank you. Good afternoon. The time is 5:46 PM, and we have recess from executive session. And work session is now open again, so the public is invited to come join us once again. We were in the middle of discussion about agenda items. Were there any other questions or comments on our agenda?
Is there gonna be a presentation on agenda item thirteen? There is gonna be a presentation. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
All right, anything else?
We are gonna pull that one out. No, not thirteen.
You can do that.
Okay.
You wanna pull S?
Yes.
You wanna pull S? Okay. You have to ask.
Okay, I'll ask.
All right, so we will pull S. Anything else? All right, let's move on then. Item B is discussion of the Village Collective with Katie and Melanie. Ladies?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we will be giving you an update on the Village program. You first heard this concept from the Ford Task Force, and after a lot of planning and preparation, we are excited to announce that the program is ready for launch. It is now my pleasure to introduce you to Melanie Eichner, our Village Coordinator, who will be giving you this presentation.
Good evening, Mary Council. As Katie said, my name is Melanie, and I'm here to give the update for Village Collective. So before we hop into specifics, I wanted to give a bit of background about Village Collective and why we're even doing this. Pilot Four from Vision 2040 calls for exploring new options for the 55-plus population that maintain a high standard of living while reducing footprint. Several years ago, the Ford Task Force was asked to look into different housing options for the senior community in Capel. They explore options like assisted living facilities, naturally occurring retirement communities, and other living arrangements, but they ultimately decided to focus on a model called the Village Model or Village Concept that enables people to stay in their own homes for longer. After much work and preparation, they presented their findings to council with the Capel Village Business Plan in 2023. So we're gonna go over what is a village. A village is a membership and volunteer-based program that is designed to help older adults age in place. Every village is different, but most offer some sort of services and social events to their members. These services help the members age in place because volunteers are able to take care of those little things around the house that members may not be able to do themselves. So this isn't a full replacement for assisted living or nursing facilities, but it does help bridge that gap for people who need a little help around the house and can still live independently. These services often include transportation, wellness checks, home maintenance, and contractor referrals or discounts. There's an estimated three hundred and seventy-five villages all over the country, including some in Canada, and they're all specifically designed with their particular members' needs in mind. For the city of Capel, the Village Coordinator, which is me, was hired in 2024. We conducted a resident survey in 2025 to see what kind of services and events people would want. We will go over those results a little bit later in the presentation. And we've branded the program as Village Collective, and I'm really excited to announce that our launch day is officially October 25th of this year, so we have just about a month and a half. A little bit about our name and our logo. We've been working with Maria Dennison in Communications to put this all together. Starting at the top, our logo features houses to reflect our goal of helping people age in place. It has leaves to represent the thriving and growing community we'll have. And if you'll notice, the door of the house is actually a little computer mouse, which highlights the online aspect of the program. As for the name, we went with Village to say connected to the greater Village movement happening across the country. And we went with Collective because we felt that it highlights the connection between members without implying that it's a physical place or home. That has been one of the number-one questions we've been asked. People wanna know if it's a housing facility or not, so we wanted the program name to reflect the community without implying a housing situation. So the mission of Village Collective is that we are dedicated to supporting aging in place by connecting Capel residents 50 and up with practical services, social opportunities, and a strong sense of community. And that last bit in green is really the big three. We do those practical services, social opportunities, and a strong sense of community. And our vision is also consistent with Capel's in that we envision a family community for a lifetime, where every older adult feels valued, supported, and connected, and where aging in place is not just possible, but it's empowering. Next, we'll go over who is involved in Village Collective. The first major group is our members. Members are residents of Capel who are 50 years or older, and there is a sixty dollars a year annual membership fee. Members have access to all the volunteer services, social events, and they can get discounts through our resource directory, which I'll talk about a little later. The next group is our volunteers. They go through an application process. They go through a couple of background checks, depending on what kinds of services they wanna provide, and they have several annual trainings. They'll do a volunteer orientation and an elder abuse awareness/mandated reporter training, and those are all renewed annually. The next big group is our community partners, and they're broken down into two smaller groups. So first are the participants at the resource directory, which again, I'll go into a bit later. But next are just local businesses with related missions. We've reached out to several nonprofits and other businesses to see how we can support them and use their resources to increase our support for members. We also refer our members to those businesses if they have a specific need that we can't help with or if a nonprofit wants to come and give a talk to our members, we can facilitate that. Our website is where all the administrative magic will happen. We are using the Helpful Village software, which is a company that specializes in making functional websites for villages. They have been a really great partner so far, and they've helped us with getting a website where everything can happen in one solid place. With the software, we can manage application intake and approval, member profiles, event registrations, and service requests. Our website is already active, and it can be accessed at capeltx.gov/village. So as I mentioned before, we did put out a survey early this year to see what kind of services and social events people are interested in, and we'll be going over a bit of those results here. This survey ran from March through April this year, about one month. It was promoted using all the usual methods, and it was targeted specifically towards Capel residents aged 50 and up. We got six hundred and four responses, which according to the industry average is enough data to be 95% confident with a 4% margin of error. Based on the data that we got from the survey, we will be providing contractor referrals, home maintenance, transportation, and wellness checks. Members can request services at any time. The easiest and best way to do this is to submit a form on our website, but they can also call or send an email, and we can submit a request on their behalf. Once the request has been approved, it is made available to volunteers who can then pick up the request. So we're gonna go into a bit more depth with each of those service types, starting with contractor referrals.
Melanie, can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
Back on this slide where we had the website provider, can you talk a little bit about the security of the data? Because we have senior citizens and sensitive data there. What are we doing to make sure it's secure?
Yeah, it's absolutely all PCI compliant. All of the, any API keys or anything, they don't operate with any of that, so it's all within their structure. And the man who runs it, he was actually in voting security before, so he's fully vetted with all those things there. Yeah.
Is the data going to be within the city's firewall, or is it going to be on their firewall?
It's on their firewall. Yeah, but it's fully PCI compliant and everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. So hopping into contractor referrals, seventy-nine point five of respondents were moderately to highly interested in referrals or discounts to contractor services. This was by far the highest category of interest, so we've been working with Kevin Rukulkaba and Public Works to put together this amazing resource that we are calling the Village Collective Resource Directory. This is an interactive map that highlights senior discounts in and around Capel. We've got businesses and contractors that partner with us to create discounts that are either exclusive to members of the village or they could just be for seniors in general. This map allows people to explore discounts by location, and it provides contact info for the businesses so they can reach out. Right now, we have forty-one community partners in the directory. And to get these partners on board, we reached out to every registered contractor within the city, and we have a simple signup process to add contractors on a rolling basis. We've also reached out to some specific businesses that we thought would be of interest to our members. This will continue to be updated on a rolling basis, so we hope that it will continue to grow. There's already a lot of value in this resource, and I don't have time to go over all of the discounts, but just to highlight a couple. One partner is offering a thousand dollars off any accessible shower or bathtub remodel for Village Collective members, and another is saying, let us pay for your village membership, sixty dollars off any service. So I'm expecting that this resource will be a huge asset to our members. The value is really easy to see, and while most of the value of Village Collective is found in the community building and the services, this is just a really visible way to see that membership fee being put to good use.
Melanie?
Yes.
So let's say a resident has a complaint against a vendor. Do they have to deal directly with the vendor, or does the city get involved in this?
They'll be dealing directly with the vendors.
Wait, I'm sorry. Who's dealing directly with the vendors?
The seniors.
I have more questions later. I'm gonna let you finish so that we can, yeah. Because I know you're good. I have questions too that you can.
So you wanna hold questions to the end and let her finish? All right, okay.
Hopping back in, we'll go over home maintenance. So in an open response question, fifty-five percent of those respondents mentioned wanting some sort of home maintenance and handyman services. Some of the responses I have highlighted here call for handyman help from a neighbor, a Facebook-type page where we can post a need and someone can volunteer. Another calls for simple repairs around the house that require a ladder, and another mentions light bulb replacement, fire alarm battery replacement, and tall ceilings. So our volunteers aren't gonna be performing extensive plumbing repairs or anything that requires a certification, but they are totally able to help with those small maintenance tasks around the house that members may have trouble doing themselves. As a general rule of thumb, anything that you might ask from a helpful neighbor would be an appropriate task for our volunteers. Next, we're gonna be providing transportation. We found that thirty-two point seven percent of participants expressed moderate to high interest in receiving transportation services. We've already got a lot of great transportation options around Capel, but this just gives people another option. Volunteers will drive people in their own vehicles. But what I'm most excited for is that our software has a built-in carpool feature. So when someone signs up for an event, depending on the type of an event, one of the questions asked is if the member needs a ride or if they have extra seats in their vehicle and would like to give someone a ride. Depending on the answer, the system will automatically create a transportation request on their behalf, and volunteers will be able to carpool with them. Next, we'll be providing wellness checks. So twenty-one point nine percent of respondents showed moderate to high interest in receiving wellness checks, and around forty percent of those willing to volunteer indicated a willingness to provide wellness checks. These wellness checks will just be a simple phone call, and we've got a script that they can follow, but we also encourage them to go off-script and create genuine relationships with each other. We've also got a no-call protocol where if someone doesn't answer three times in a row within a few hours, we'll call their emergency contact to see if they know anything. And if that doesn't give us answers, we'll call Capel PD to perform a welfare check and make sure that that member is safe and doing okay. And if that doesn't give us answers, we'll call Capel PD to perform a welfare check and make sure that that member is safe and doing okay. So that's it for services, and next we can hop on to social events. We found that sixty-two point eight percent of respondents were moderately to highly interested in social opportunities, and the examples we gave were coffee, dance, craft, and book clubs. Because of this, we've created a full calendar of events. It's off to the right, but it's pretty small, I apologize, that's mostly just for visual so that you can see that we've got a full calendar. Uh, but we do plan to host our own events as well as connect members with existing events around DFW. What's really great about Village Collective is that members and volunteers can also host events. Say there's a member that can't get up out of their home to attend a book club, but they really wanna participate, we can help them to host a book club at their house. Or if someone has, is really passionate about art and they wanna lead a class, we can help facilitate signups and things like that to make it happen. You may be wondering how our events are gonna be different than those already offered at the senior center. So our events are not meant to duplicate or replicate anything at the senior center, we're just looking to supplement what's already going on there. So some of our events will be held in the evenings and on weekends when the senior center is normally closed. And we will also have events in a variety of public and private spaces across Capel and the surrounding areas. We've already got things planned at local restaurants, the library, the core, just a lot going on in general. We also hope to offer different events, so where the senior center has a cornhole club, we may have pickleball or something else that they don't already provide. So now that we know what we're doing, we can talk about the timeline. First is our initial recruitment phase, which starts right now. Our website is up and it is available, and people can submit their applications to become either a member or a volunteer, and we'll get back to them with the next steps. Also, just to note for anyone listening in who wants to become a member, we will adjust your membership update dates to make sure that you get a full year of membership benefits. Next, we will start our training phase. We've got several volunteer orientations set up across town to begin training those volunteers. All those dates can be found on our online event calendar, and then we've got launch. Our launch event will be October twenty-fifth from eleven to one at the Senior and Community Center. This is just a celebratory launch event for members and volunteers and for people who are interested in learning more. We'll have food and some community-building things and some resources to help people reap the most of their membership. After launch, members will officially be able to request services. Before I'm done tonight, I just wanted to reiterate the value to the city that this program will be. This is a people program, and as such, we keep people as the priority. For members, we prioritize that engagement and support. If you're one of the big three, we provide practical support, social opportunities, and a sense of community. For volunteers, we prioritize retention and recognition. We've got a couple of recognition structures in place to make the volunteers know that they are valued and appreciated, and we've also kept our processes simple so that they can retain their flexibility and see their impact in real time. And all of this results in an increased community ownership and pride. Volunteers have control over which services they wanna provide, members can create their own clubs and programs within the village, and we're just there to help administer and facilitate, but really it's the community that is powering Village Collective. We are able to provide services with minimal infrastructure, since a lot of the backend and communication happens online, and we don't need a lot of physical resources to provide services. Our processes are also very flexible and scalable, so if something isn't working, we have the freedom to adjust, and if something needs to grow, we can also do that very naturally. Just a bit of a recap before I'm done tonight. Village Collective has been specifically designed with the needs of Capel residents in mind, and we will offer services like wellness checks, home maintenance, transportation, and business referrals and discounts. Services and social events will start on October twenty-fifth at our official launch, and we have prioritized that engagement, support, and connection for residents. Thank you so much for listening, and at this time, I can take any additional questions.
So are you gonna invite the board board to your launch?
Absolutely, we are.
Mark, thank you.
So, um, how are we vetting the contractors that are gonna be involved with this program?
As a city, unfortunately, we're not able to vet or recommend, what we are providing is more just a referral service. So we reach out to every registered contractor within the city, and then if they get back to us willing to provide a discount, we make that information available to our members.
Okay, so we're not recommending, how do we educate the people participating in this program that they should never give money upfront to a contractor?
Yeah.
They should only pay progress payments and then not make a final payment until the work is absolutely complete.
Yeah, absolutely. We've got a link to the Better Business Bureau on our website and just kind of general information like that, but we can certainly add it to the webpage so that people are even more aware that they just should be very cautious when working with contractors.
Yeah, cause I've just seen so many people complain about how they're taking advantage of. And then that second question, so how are we leveraging this kind of abundance of energy that's available at Capel ISB?
Oh, we would love to partner with Capel ISB, and yeah, because this program is so flexible and scalable, we can definitely, we've talked about maybe reading books to little kids or something like that, working with Capel ISB, or doing a seniors versus seniors event, things like that, yeah.
You know, reaching out to seniors, you know, in Capel High School where they can, you know, perform a lot of this assistance, which we're talking about for the community. Have we touched base with the, with Capel ISB to see if this is something that they would be interested in getting behind?
I haven't made contact with them, but I absolutely will, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Who's next, Jim? Ramesh?
I just have a comment, you know, because this is a city website. I'm concerned that our residents might think there's an implied guarantee by the city. So I would request that we make the language very clear that we're just a marketplace that is bringing buyers and sellers together and that they're not backing anyone.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, we made that very clear on the website. We've also extensively in our handbook put disclaimers and just let people know that nothing's guaranteed, we're just a method to get information out.
Me?
I wasn't sure who was Jim.
So I was curious, are we retaining a service to do the vetting of the volunteers? To run credit checks, background checks, criminal history checks?
Yeah, volunteers will run through the same volunteer process that all the city volunteers do, we use Sterling volunteers for that. And then anyone who wants to drive, we run an additional driving history check on them through Sterling volunteers.
Okay, and you get confirmation of insurance?
Yes, yes.
All that kind of stuff. So Sterling, is that a vendor we use to run checks for who?
For all the volunteers in the city, that's just all, that's where we do our background checks.
But isn't that just a criminal background check?
Yes, yeah.
So we're not, I would, I'd recommend we do a little higher level of check, cause this is gonna serve us, I don't wanna say that fifty is vulnerable, but fifty plus gets into relatively vulnerable population in the city and,
Yeah.
you know, I would, I would suggest we run a pretty high-grade, you know, sex offender registry, uh, you know, driving history, we do the driving record, credit record, I would run through all those different nets. If we're going to be sending them, you know, and suggesting through this program that this guy gets access to this woman's home, I think we have to be very, very careful about who we allow participate in that.
Absolutely, yeah, we can look into that.
Brianna?
I have a lot of questions.
Oh, shut up.
A lot of them have been asked, but, um, okay, so this is, we're running this by the city, right? It's a city-driven? Okay, so question is, Ramesh asked you a minute ago, or Councilmember Pramkumar asked you earlier about, um, data, and you said it's not within the city walls or within our, our system? So I'm confused about that, if it's city.
Yes, yeah, there's two, so the city has its own website, and then Helpful Village is run separately from that. We've actually done some, we've run it through a system where it pulls up anything that could potentially be an issue where someone could pull out inside information, and our website is more secure than the city website, so.
Okay, but it's still, but it's still under the city umbrella, is it right?
It still has the .gov URL, yeah.
It, we're still collecting as a city, we're still collecting data. We're still supporting it, okay, I just wanted to make sure, so. Yeah, and I, I would, yeah, I would be careful with regards to like which one's more secure or not, like we just need to be secure as a city, and, um, and I just wanna be mindful of that.
Yeah.
So, okay, so data is collected and processed and stored like we do any other data through the city?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How did we come up with sixty dollars as a membership?
That was what was originally proposed with the board board, and we ran some questions in the survey to see how much people were willing to pay, and it was also compliant with that, it was aligned with that.
Are there any other communities that have something like this that we have done like a comparison to? I honestly think sixty dollars is a lot. I'm in that age range, and I'm not sure what I get for sixty dollars that I don't already get from either being a member of the senior center or on Facebook pages, or like, I guess I just wanna understand, like, if we're gonna do this, right, and if we're, when we launch this, which I think it's a great idea by all means, I think it's important that we have something like this, but what do we, what do, what do people get for sixty dollars? Cause our seniors are on a very tight budget, and sixty dollars is a lot.
Yeah, it is, um, they get.
Is that sixty dollars a month or sixty dollars total?
A year, okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then that's maybe better, okay, budget.
I mean, yeah, they get that part of the support.
Okay, yeah, okay, maybe that's better, better, but did we, did we compare anything to anybody or just like you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, with the villages all over the country, they range everywhere from free to thousands of dollars. Um, so ours compared to other villages actually on the spread, yeah, so we just went with that number that the board recommended, and that was consistent with what the survey said that they were willing to pay.
Okay. I think it would be good, and I'm sure we will get like an update along the way, and if we could just see how our membership is doing. And then if we think about, I'm curious if there's a, cause this is only for Capel residents, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so then that's the other thing, so we don't have like differentiating fees, okay. The other one was, and maybe it's similar to what Councilmember Hill and Walker were alluding to with our vendors and just checks and balances because, or security and background checks, because, um, there are people who take advantage of our senior community, right? And I've had at least one senior call me recently and was very helpful in helping me to navigate that where literally they did exactly what you just said, Mark, they paid part of it, and then the, the person just no longer showed up. He was like, I'm out, I'm not gonna finish it, and, um, and then they were like, we don't know what to do. And they did pull a permit, so they're obviously on our list, right? So I think a lot of it is if we could do education more than just having something on the website because some of our seniors may not be tech savvy, right? But maybe just to have some information sessions for people, just to help them with, right? Cause we're, we're just providing a, I guess, a database of people, right? We're not recommending.
Correct.
But we also, I worry about liability, and where that liability lays with just like, what if somebody comes in and does something, then what, right? So I don't know.
Yeah.
That, yeah, um, so I think a lot of it is just education.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and because we can just kinda do what we want, we can absolutely do information sessions on scam prevention and things like that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Have we thought about, I was thinking about the ten, I mean, I was thinking about the sixty dollars. Um, have we thought about doing something where we combine senior center fees along with, am I taking all your questions? And you look funny, I didn't write anything down, I'm just kind of like, utmost, I'm like, reading here, we're on the same brainwave. But have we thought of any sort of like a combo deal, like if you join for sixty, then you also get the senior membership?
We haven't looked into that, but it is certainly something that we could combine, cause it would make sense, yeah.
Okay, I'm just like asking so that Councilor Neville's gonna have some questions too.
Alright, I have Bijou next, then Kevin, and then Jim.
I'll thank you, we have both, I have a question for you, since city is launching this program, what are our potential liabilities?
Well, uh, one is education, one is, uh, there's disclaimers on all this stuff. We had Katie and Melanie and went through all that with them, so we've got the disclaimers, but we would have to continually do some reeducation, as long as we do those things, it lessens the opportunity now. You know, I, I think the suggestion with Walker to do a more robust background check is, that's all you do, cause there's no guarantee. Uh, but if we do everything that's reasonable, then the disclaimer should be upheld if we act within what we've disclosed we do, so.
So if the vendor doesn't complete the work, and if they file a lawsuit against the vendor, can we be the party included?
We should not be, cause we didn't hire him, so we have no privilege to contract with him. Uh, we provided the list, and we provided that we can guarantee quality of the work or its completion, it's done for convenience, to provide a name, and that senior would ultimately be responsible. Being a senior and living by myself, um, you know, I, I rely on just the same information that the rest of the population knows, they get a recommendation from somebody, can choose someone. So we'll do some of that, and that's why we're only doing this for the local, the people who live here that work in here, so we've got some basis to do some cross-checking, but there are no ultimate guarantees. And if we're gonna have a program, all we can do is do the disclaimer and do the education, and I think if we do those things, and, how can I say, annually or quarterly or some period of time reinforce those things, both at senior center and through the village, we should be okay.
Kevin?
Uh, alright, I'm gonna go through my list, contractor referrals, yes. Okay, um, the welfare checks, uh, I, I know you said that you were gonna have the volunteers do the welfare checks, but you're also gonna involve PD as well?
Yeah.
Is that actual officers or the citizens on patrol?
Those are actual officers, yeah.
Okay.
The volunteers will be making phone calls, the actual officers will be attending, going to the house.
Has there, has there been consideration of engaging the citizens on patrol group?
Um, there was, and I talked with Sergeant Largen about that, um, he felt that the police department, the officials knew what to look for a little bit better, so.
Cool, thank you very much. And then, let's see here, talked about the location of events. Uh, oh, are there other villages in DFW?
Yep, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, alright, cause my question was about collaborative opportunities with other villages, so we'd be the first one?
At least in this area, there's a couple in Houston.
In Houston, okay, alright, uh, any, any potential for like field trips or anything?
Oh, yeah, I've already been down there, Michael Collinberg down there, he's great, he does mostly welfare checks at that village.
Excellent. Um, and then as far as the, um, you said, you know, recruitment starts now and the launch is coming up, is there any sort of like launch, like critical mass that is required of members for the, the launch? So you already have some, you know, like, some, I know you said you got some contractors lined up, but like, are you trying to get to a certain amount of members before you officially launch, or is that just kinda like whatever?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, and then, um, I think doing some sort of bundling with your senior center membership in a village is a cool idea.
It's a great idea, I can't wait.
Fantastic idea.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to say, I'm very excited about this. You know, um, I, I will say this, Mark, I, I love the thought about involving our high school seniors and, and stuff, and just really engaging that, because I, I've heard a lot in the community, there, there's some back and forth here, like, you know, we talk about a family community for a lifetime, right? And then with a lot of discussions that are going on with the Capel School District and stuff like that, there's been a little bit of back and forth about our seniors, and I wanna make sure that anybody who chooses to live in Capel feels welcome, that they, you know, that they don't feel like any pressure to like move on to somewhere else or anything like that, because, uh, you know, many of us around the table, we have people that, you know, are family members that are seniors or were, you know, close to people, and so I wanna make sure that, that Capel is that inclusive home for everyone, and we don't feel any pressure or anything like that. So, um, just, I, I love, I love that this program is coming around to really help people if they wanna stay in, in age in place and, and enjoy their property as long as they can, so I'm excited about it and look forward to seeing it grow.
Thank you.
Jim?
Uh, thank you, Eric, uh, those were obviously your best questions. So, do we have a requirement that the volunteers have to be a Capel resident?
No.
Okay, okay, I would recommend we do that. I wouldn't just let anybody in northern Texas come into our community and
I agree.
and service our senior citizens. And I would recommend too that, like, if we offer a roofing, like, if we, if we say, well, this is a roofing contractor that's willing to offer a discount or something, you might try to solicit more than one, because if you, if you give them a chance to pick between two competing services, and then they make the choices to which one they hire, I think it's less of an endorsement by the city.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll go with Mark first, cause there's probably a follow-up to that.
Mark?
It is kind of a little bit of follow-up. Are we making sure that they have licenses to work in Capel, like, like our? Are we making sure that they have licenses to, um, work in Capel, like, like a roofing contractor?
Um, yes, they, they will be registered in Capel, it's, yeah.
Mariana?
Um, will we, will neighbors helping neighbors like coordinate with the village? Or like, I just wanna make sure that program continues, because that is sometimes what people rely on, they have a list of like, they need handiwork and yet this kinda falls into that, I wanna make sure that if we have people who don't join, that they still have the opportunity and that that includes members and non-members, so that program will continue, right?
Yeah. Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
So you took part in my question.
Okay, well, and I'm just, cause I'm kinda think of like, even when we talked about transportation, we still do the
Span.
Span, yeah.
Span, so like that's, but that's gonna be somewhat different, but will we coordinate with them? Like, I guess we have all these different resources, we can think of what you've did with us, like thinking of just our assets across the, you know, the community and finding a way to collaborate versus kinda all of them kinda being individual.
Traveling, yeah.
Right, so, um, so I think it's more of a comment, like, can we just make sure that we are inclusive? And then making sure that some of these opportunities aren't just gone, because people may not join.
Yeah.
Sorry, didn't mean to take part of your question too, a hard role.
Sorry, she did open.
You are, so I'm gonna continue with, kinda on that. So, when someone come, calls in and asks for a volunteer services, home repair, how do we vet that to make sure that it's within the skill set? And, uh, you know, with neighbors helping neighbors, sometimes the projects get really large.
Yes, yeah.
How do you keep it within the scope of, you know, like a home repair, not a remodel?
So all of, yeah, all of the requests do have to be approved before they're released to volunteers. So we will be able to either put eyes on it or just kind of talk through it with them and make sure that it's appropriate for volunteers. So, before volunteers will see it, it'll be reviewed.
Okay, thank you. Bijou?
Yeah, thanks, so if we are successful with this program, what's the next step, what are we envisioning to do next?
Oh, that's a great question, so a lot of villages end up being multi-generational, there, I mean, like you talked about the ISD, that's a very natural next step is to bring in other people. We also could extend it to those with disabilities who are under fifty, I know there's been some rumblings about that, but, um, it really depends on what is called for at the time.
So I understand you are the coordinator for the village and you are coordinator for the neighbors helping neighbors, that's once a year. Are there any collaborations happening?
We'll definitely work together on that, um, we do get a lot of calls throughout the year of people needing help, where unfortunately we have to say, well, we'll do this event in April, so this will be a great service to those calls that we get throughout the year, it can work better that way.
Thank you. I, I'm, hang on, so what are you gonna do if someone calls in and they're not a member of the village?
For neighbors helping neighbors?
Yeah.
Um, well, they're, they're still two separate, so the village will use its own program, so.
Well, and
Well, that's what I was asking, like, we're not gonna just stop helping the people who don't join, cause they may not have.
No, no, but, I mean, suppose somebody calls in in the summer saying, I've got the, you know, a water faucet that needs to be tightened or something.
Oh, that should
You know, you, you can't put them off till, till April, but, you know.
So in those situations, what we've been doing is we've relied on our community groups, um, like different church groups, um, different nonprofits to get those projects done.
Okay, thank you, um, Kevin?
Um, I, I was just wondering, uh, you know, in the, in the spirit of neighbors helping neighbors, are there other collaborative things? Like that you already guys have on the radar that, that could work together, like any other events or anything like that? Like in, in the spirit of neighbors helping neighbors?
Not quite, so I can think, we don't have any scheduled programming per se, um, but we'll definitely work together. Um, you know, during neighbors helping neighbors, we plan to, you know, pass along information about the village, um, cause it's kind of the same target audience.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we'll work together that way.
I, I just wanna reiterate, I, I really would, um, well, I understand that the, the sixty dollars was a recommendation from Ford Board. I'd really like for us to evaluate, is that, what, what, what is the reasoning of the price point on that? Is there a reason, is that something that was just kinda thrown out there because it's a best practice for the village? Because if it's a best practice, that may not be the best practice for Capel, is what I'm trying to say, so, you know. And, and I think your point is, an annual membership is ten dollars for the Senior Center, so.
Yeah.
If there was some sort of, yeah, like matching of that, or, or like, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's ten dollars to be a member of the Senior Center, but fifteen to be a part of the, the village as well, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure what that looks like. Because I know that not all members of the Senior Center are Capel residents, so we have to, we'd have to look at that as well, so definitely recognize that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to echo that too, let's just look at that price point and figure out what makes sense, um.
Yeah, okay.
People will ask kind of what are they getting for that, right?
Yeah.
And so we're, I mean, they're still also on top of that, gonna have to pay for some services, I know we also have volunteers, so just thinking through. Y'all may come back and say sixty makes sense, um, but just to relook at that. Um, and then I kinda wanna go back to your comment, Jim, about volunteers being in Capel. I actually like that, I don't, I don't know where we landed on that or if that can be looked at, but I do like, maybe if we start with, you have to be in Capel and see kind of what the response is, but stay within Capel, that way you're Capel helping Capel. And then I think from a background check and everything, like, instead of, you're right, like people from the outside. And then, um, I'm curious as far as like vendors, I don't know that we have every type of service provided by someone in Capel.
Yeah.
So I presume you'll have to do Capel and non-Capel.
Yeah, they're around, definitely.
Okay, okay, so I, I would like to, you know, kinda echo what, that's what you were saying, right? I wanna make sure I was on the same page with you, yeah.
I think it makes it less likely there'll be people signing up through the wrong reasons, if we limit it to Capelism, so.
Right. Right.
Okay, I've got Ramesh, Mark, and then Bijou.
Thank you, Mayor, um, on, on the topic of pricing of sixty dollars a year, I think we should definitely look at what that website is charging us, if it's on a per user basis or, or a bundle pricing.
Mm-hmm.
We should look at that, I really like, um, Councilmember Walker's suggestion that certain vendors that are going to go into people's home, we should be doing a deeper, um, you know, dig down, dig through on them, and there's gonna be costs involved for that. I think we should look that, uh, in, take the cost into consideration. I'm, I'm, I'm positive that the city will contribute to this budget.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, we should have a balance of, uh, what the city contributes versus what the residents pay for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can, can I clear, ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Um, you said vendors, but I heard Councilmember Walker say volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah.
So I wanna make sure that I'm, that we're all on the same page.
Thanks, thanks for the correction, I, I, I should have said, uh, volunteers.
Okay, alright, that's
And the cost of this is not gonna be split between the city and the participants, the city is gonna bear the majority of the cost.
True, item is starting with fifty thousand per annum, I believe.
Uh, thirty.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, yeah.
Um, Mark? Yeah, so I, I like the idea of keeping the volunteers to, um, Capel. Um, I would like to see it extended to Capel students in Capel ISD.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Well, can I follow up on that real quick, are we done?
Yeah.
Oh, can I follow up?
Sure.
I mean, we also have, you know, the Young Men's Service League and the Assistant League and, you know, Lions of Rotary and this bang-up, brand-new Kiwanis Club.
Mm-hmm.
Uh,
Yeah, there you go.
So, uh, just giving you a shout out, so, uh, I think, you know, those are also natural constituencies for volunteers.
Yeah.
Bijou?
Yeah, that was my question, cause close to fifty percent of the kids attend Capel ISD are outside of Capel's boundaries.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, are there any age requirements for volunteers? Cause that might be a, let, now, and, and if you tell us that's eighteen, I mean, there are kids that are eighteen that are still in school, but that would be a, a question that I would have.
Um, there are none right now, anyone under eighteen must get a parent's signature, but we do have provisions for a temporary volunteer status, particularly for like Boy Scouts or something. I'm not gonna run a bunch of background checks on Boy Scouts if they just wanna serve soup to our members or something like that. So if it's a particular event, particular people, we can waive those requirements for that particular situation.
Which I think is what we do for other city opportunities as well, because our kids all need volunteer hours and so that's a great opportunity to do that.
Like, kinda like to Ramesh's point, like, we maybe not send a sixteen-year-old into somebody's house to go change a light bulb or, or something like that, like, it would need to be appropriate, and I definitely wanna find appropriate volunteer opportunities for our, our
Absolutely.
our student body that's under eighteen, so, okay, I think we're on six.
I agree.
Right, looking forward to seeing you on October twenty fifth.
Yeah, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
That was fun, thanks.
Good time was had by all.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, item C is a discussion regarding the interlocal agreement with DCTA for workforce transit.
Well, we're gonna have the exact type of exciting conversation.
No, yeah, I say I apologize, the council line is not gonna be anywhere near as exciting, but, um, good evening. So tonight we're here to discuss the workforce transit program in Capel and to consider the continuing, the continuation of the program. Um, you all know the history of this program, but I'm just giving a quick refresher for you. The city started the program to solve the first mile, last mile connection issue for employees trying to get to work at Capel businesses. The inability to get to work was making it difficult for a couple employers to attract employees. And so the city entered into an interlocal agreement with the Denton County Transportation Authority to manage a contract and all administrative functions for workforce transit in Capel. Lift provides the first mile, last mile connectivity between designated transit stops and Capel businesses. And this program was created really as a business retention as well as a business attraction tool. The initial ILA was a year contract that ran from October first, twenty nineteen to September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And the city has since adopted five additional one-year contracts. These are the six stops that are currently, um, included in the program. We will be adding a stop, um, in Cypress Waters once the Silver Line is operational, so that will be one change, once that is active. Um, our current agreement has been in place since October first of twenty twenty-four and it will expire on September thirtieth of this year, that's why we're back in front of you tonight. Our ridership has stayed consistent over the past few years, um, and as with previous years, we have riders coming from all six of our designated transit stops. Um, riders are traveling to a variety of businesses in Capel, with the largest growth happening on the east side of town. And then riders using the service seven days a week and at all hours of the day. Since we only have data through the month of July at this point, we have projected what the ridership might be for this year. And so just using kind of the, the average of what we're seeing each month, so, um, and you can see that for this year, it's close to last year's actual ridership numbers, and you can kinda see on this graph that ridership has stayed pretty consistent over the last five years. And so through July, the city has spent twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Sixteen thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents of that has been on the actual rides. Nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents has been to DCTA for administrative costs. And so just kinda as a reminder of the breakdown, the rider pays the first two dollars of the ride, then the city picks up, uh, up, picks up the next up to fifteen dollars of the ride, and then anything beyond that is the rider's responsibility again. So staffs here tonight requesting, um, a continuation of the program. However, DCTA asked if we could create a three-year contract with the option for one, two-year renewal, rather than continuing to do the one-year annual contracts. So during that time period, the, um, DCTA staff and state staff will evaluate and explore some other options for future transit in Capel. And so if council is interested in continuing, um, the program, then we will bring that ILA for consideration at your September twenty-third meeting. And also aspects of the program will remain the same except for the duration of the contract and then the addition of that stop of, at the Silver Line, um, as mentioned before. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before you do that, kudos to, uh, Councilmember Hill for pushing on the east side ridership.
I'll say it's not our largest ridership, but it is where we've seen the most growth, so.
So originally, this was gonna be a west side program only, and Mark was very vocal about covering the east side as well. So that was a very good, uh, what do you call it, prediction of the future.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'm sorry, uh, question? Yeah, I have, uh, two questions, so are we getting any feedback from the employers that, um, that, that is helping them retain or attract?
They have all shown great, uh, appreciation for the program, because it does definitely help them. And I will tell you that the hard part is there's fluctuations, so one month, you know, ridership may come from one business and the next month it may shift where the greater ridership's going to a different business, so, um, but they have all expressed their appreciation for this program, that it's made a significant difference for them, so.
And then the other question I had was about the scale of the employers, um, is, is it true that, um, you know, the big employers, like Amazon are utilizing it the most, or are we seeing small employers, um, citywide, um, using it heavily too?
So when we first started the program, it was definitely our larger employers, but since, since then, in the last several years, we've had the addition of several small businesses, so that is actually where we're seeing a lot of ridership is from some of our small businesses right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jim?
Uh, thanks, um, why, why are the DCTA, I've got two questions, why are the DCTA administrative costs so high? They're over half of the ridership cost.
That was just the way the program was set up, it is a pretty heavy administrative lift for them, um, and we're not a member city of DCTA. So that is part of their partnership program with, um, cities that are not part of their membership.
Okay, um, okay, well, then I guess I'm fine, that's, that's all, good, thank you.
Bijou?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, Mayor, um, you spent what, twenty-three thousand dollars?
Total, how much did we spend in total?
This, this year so far, it's about twenty-six thousand.
Okay, what was the budgeted amount?
Fifty thousand, we budgeted fifty thousand, so we have stayed, can, since the inception of the program, we have stayed under, under the amount that we have budgeted.
What do we do with the unused fund?
Um, right now, we are encumbering it, so it carries over, so that we, we think, I can't guarantee, but we think that we will see a significant increase in ridership once the Silver Line does open. So that way, we've got those funds encumbered to cover that additional cost in the event that happens and we're not at a new budget year. Um, so that's, right now, that's what's happening.
So out of the twenty-three hundred rides that you show on the graph, how many people are participating, number of people?
Individuals or businesses?
Individuals.
Um.
Who's paying?
I, I don't actually know that, because they're not, there's not an identifier for the rider. We only have a code for the business itself, so I can only tell you, so I can't guarantee, we have, we show unduplicated riders every month, but I can't tell you that Bijou has ridden it six times and Mark has ridden it seven, I, I, I'm not able to identify individual riders that way.
That's what I was trying to get, uh, is it group of people taking advantage of this or is spread out?
Well, a- again, it's, you'll see, um, we even have it broken down by business, so we can see how many people are riding for each business. I just don't know if that's two people per business or if it's twelve people per business, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, um, question, I, I know our high school juniors and seniors, um, are starting to work. Does it make sense to extend this to high school so that they can catch a ride to wherever they're going to work?
This is open to anyone that is traveling within the boundary, so we've got the entire, we've got a geofence around the entire city limits as well as those six designated transit stops, so anybody is allowed to use it, um, yeah. Their employer signs up with the city, so they get a code specific to their employer to utilize.
Got it, so maybe just education, educating the employer that you can extend this to a high school student if they're working?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mark? So, um, I understand the need for them to go to a three-year term, we have some long-range planning, just like we look to, um, wanna have those ten-year terms, uh, the taxes, so it's, it's understandable. So, the, over the three years, it'll be a fixed rate? And then I assume any extensions after that, then they would be able to go up a percentage?
Yes, yes, or we'd be able to negotiate that, so.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Just so you know, there's a funding out clause, there's a funding out clause in the agreement. So if this time next year you can afford it or don't wanna do it, you have an out, you just have to give them thirty days' notice.
Kevin?
So I know that we've talked about, you know, with the Silver Line coming online, uh, you know, there is anticipation that ridership should go that ridership should go up in participation in this program. We, we, we're thinking, I know we've been waiting for many years for that to happen. So let's say that we sign this, you know, three-year agreement, we, we agree to that, to the ILA. I know that we had discussed that if the Silver Line becomes very popular and, and there might be a need to do something different than the lift program, um, could, will that agreement, that three-year agreement with, uh, DCTA, will that allow us to have the flexibility to change the agreement in terms of like, like, let's say that we do a shuttle service or something like that? Like, it's so that we, we can justify the need to do some different type of, of, what does that look like?
Yeah, that is part of the reason during this three-year time period, we will be discussing off that, we'll be evaluating. And so we've been using these one-year contracts to do that. Silver Line hasn't come into operation yet, so it's been hard to really change. But this, during these three-year time period, we will be meeting with DCTA, DCTA staff to discuss about what our needs are and how we may need to make shifts, so.
But you're not anticipating that within that three years, that we would need to make a change? I mean, unless some crazy happens?
Let me take this one.
Sure.
So the DCTA has a new executive director, and he's basically doing a grounds-up look of all of their operations. And he came in here saying, do we really want to continue the program? Because it doesn't fit in their, their grand scheme of how they do transportation. We said, we really like it, and so he's agreed to do it again. He's going to be coming back to Mindy with some other suggestions. Don't know exactly what those are going to be, but it's kind of what you're suggesting. He's, they are looking at other transportation modes.
Okay.
For us.
All right, but I guess my thing is, like, within that three years, we don't see a big need to do something. While, while we may take some suggestions and some adjustments, we're not going to completely revamp it or, or look at that, right?
I don't think, I think once the Silver Line actually becomes operational, it will take time for it to ramp up. So I think we would be fair, I, I mean, we would be in a good place to continue this for the next three years.
I, I think at the end of this three-year term, we'd be in a really good position to reevaluate that. What the timing is, I mean, it's going to take them two years at least to get the Silver Line, you know, fully going with, with ridership. Maybe longer. Jim?
Oh, thank you. Do you know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, do you know how many distinct employer codes we have?
Um, I, I mean, I have that information, I can get it to you, but I, we have, we have about twenty-five, I believe, right now.
Has that kind of increased a little over time?
It has increased over time, um, and we've had some employers that use it really heavily for a while, but we don't see much usage right now. So in, in a few employers that have left that no longer have a code. So that is, that's been our desire over the past several years, is to really push it out to employers to try to get more people signed up to utilize it. And so we continue on that. Um, now that we've got, um, Amy Anderson, who's our new economic development coordinator, we're going to be doing some targeted business retention visits. And that's one of the things specifically that we want to talk about on those visits, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that exciting presentation.
Yeah, thank you. That makes me feel better.
Certainly very interesting.
All right, Kent, time for, to top that one. Um, item D is discussion regarding the Dallas CAD Board of Directors' taxing unit appointment election for twenty twenty-five.
Exciting stuff.
If it's okay, I'll do this from here. Really just going to introduce this topic, um, looking for feedback from council on whether there's a desire to nominate, um, two persons to serve on the Dallas CAD, uh, Board of Directors. So, um, the board is made up of nine directors. Five of those are selected from the taxing units. Three elected by, by majority in the general election, one is the tax assessor-collector. Two of those five seats expire at the end of this year. So what they've asked is, they're kind of polling all the taxing units to nominate, um, people for an election or to be selected between now and the end of the year. Right now, those, those two seats are currently occupied by Kevin Carbo, who is, um, on the Mesquite ISD. So if you look at who voted for him, they've all the ISDs. Um, and then Pauline Madrona, who's Dallas County Treasurer, former city council member of the City of Dallas. So they will be eligible, um, but they're, but those seats are, are up and will be, um, up for a vote. So if there's a desire, the nominations will be due to the chief appraiser before October fifteenth. Um, and you would have to approve a resolution, um, probably at, at the next meeting on who you would want to nominate. Um, the, the attachment includes all the qualifications. I did provide, um, bad information to, uh, Mayor, or Councilmember Nevils. Sitting council members are eligible. Um, so just because you're, you're currently, um, an elected official, you're still eligible as a nominee. Um, and again, we'll be back in front of you at a future meeting, probably the next meeting, um, to, to vote. Well, no, we would be back to you with the nomination resolution. If you choose to nominate two people, we would be back to you between now and the end of the year with a resolution to vote on the two directors.
Point out how many votes we have?
We have twelve out of two thousand. That's for the, the actual vote. So previous election in ninety, in, um, twenty-four and thirty-five, so the calculation, they just run the calculation and that was included in the packet, but.
Is it still a, a, a standing procedure that we nominate the newly elected council member to get nominated? Oh, wait, is that a? I don't know why I thought that.
It was the recent pro temp mayor.
Oh, okay, that's what it was.
Jim?
Um, well, if, if we're going to consider it, would it make sense to, like, through the city to solicit interest from people that would want to serve from the community to see if anyone even wants it? I mean, because we don't want to nominate somebody that doesn't want to serve, right? I mean.
To my knowledge, Capel has not nominated people in the past.
In fact, we've actually declined to nominate anybody.
Yeah, it's a very quick barn.
I mean, you're.
The nominations are.
The, the ability to nominate someone is open if anybody has a, if, I don't. The chance of a nominee from Capel getting elected with our twelve votes is pretty minimal.
Yeah.
Bijou?
Is this a paid position?
No.
No.
And what is the term?
They're, they're going to be on a ro, four-year rotating cycle. What?
So your, your point about putting it out to the public is, is not lost on me. I'm just not sure that we could do an adequate job in the timeframe that we have left to do it.
Maybe next time.
Um, because, I mean, you know, you'd want to hit the water bill on the website and, and all that kind of stuff. And I, I don't know a cycle time we'd have a chance to do that.
Yeah, it seems like I'd kind of interfere with the boards and commission stuff too.
Well, I, I think they're due by, what?
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth, so it'd be before that. Kevin?
Have we received any solicitations for anyone who is requesting us to nominate with our votes? Excuse me?
Not this year.
Not this year? Have we received it in the past?
Yes.
Okay, I thought we did.
We, we received one from, uh, Farmers Branch Mayor Terry Men at one point.
That's right, that's right.
And then there was another appointment from another, I don't remember who it was, it was random.
Votering vote often.
Well, I'll just say, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think that we should, I'll just say, I mean, I'll recommend that we don't take any action on this, since we don't have the candidate, there's limited time, and nobody has solicited, uh, us to ask for their support, so I say we, uh, we, we sit this one out.
Unless somebody's got a candidate strongly in their back pocket, I tend to think that's probably our best choice. I mean.
Thank you.
We can nickname them twelve-vote jockey.
Sorry, sorry, that was not as exciting as it was.
Really just messing her. So the.
It's kind of hard.
So before we, I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that there is an email sitting out there asking for you to submit your desires for boards and commissions interviews. So please turn it in. Uh, the time is six fifty, and we're at the end of work session. We will move into the council chambers for regular session of the Capel City Council, starting at seven thirty. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. In case you're wondering, we have an official start time of seven thirty, so I get to, to meander here for another five seconds, but we'll get started anyway. Uh, the time is seven thirty PM, we're going to move into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the appropriate register, which was located outside the council chambers. And I'm very pleased to have, to announce tonight that for our invocation, we have Verena Shrikant, a Ha, uh, Capel High School graduate here to give our invocation. So, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand and remain standing.
Good evening, everyone. Let's take a moment to pause, center ourselves, and open our hearts as we begin with prayer. Oh God, as we gather today, we ask for your blessing of compassion and boundless love upon this congregation. Grant us wisdom, as we seek nothing more than to fulfill your purpose by serving our community with care and dedication. If ever we stray from the path of righteousness, guide us back with your steady hand, for you are our unfailing protector, guide, and shield. May your peace and kindness pour over us. Lord, strengthen us with renewed courage in your presence. Open our minds to receive your eternal wisdom, our hearts to embrace your abundant love, and our spirits to remain aligned with your divine guidance. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Item number five on our agenda is a proclamation proclaiming the month of September as Senior Citizen Month, so I'd like to invite, uh, Dylan Hernandez and associated friends to come down front with me, please. I wasn't going to say anything about just two friends, but that, that's okay.
We're important.
Oh, yes, you are.
We're, we're senior friends.
Ladies and gentlemen, whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom, experience to help enrich and strengthen the community, and whereas the Capel Senior and Community Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Capel, and whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, the Capel Senior and Community Center empowers adults fifty and over of Capel to contribute to their own health and well-being. And whereas the Capel Senior and Community Center will continue to affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of all adults fifty and over in Capel by tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Therefore, now I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Senior Center Month in the City of Capel, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center members and special efforts of the staff who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens in our community. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this ninth day of September, twenty twenty-five. So, so I'm going to hand the certificate off and say congratulations. What, what's that? Well, I, I bet some city council members have some words first. So, um, I, I was going to call on Councilmember Nevils, because I think he's got someone down here that's kind of important to him.
Hey, mom. All right, well, uh, well, uh, first of all, uh, so excited to celebrate with, uh, uh, this with you guys. Uh, it's such a blessing for me to be able to, uh, go to the senior center every month and give, uh, the city update and get an opportunity to interact, engage with our members of our senior center. Uh, the team over there, um, the city staff, they do a fantastic job of, of, uh, listening to the, the seniors. Uh, I know the programming has, has really improved over the past couple of years, coming out of COVID and stuff like that. So really happy to see, uh, just, you know, uh, where it started when I was elected and where it is now. I think some great things have happened, and I'm looking forward to seeing more great things happen in the future. So, um, I'm always, uh, joined every month by, uh, Councilmember Prim Kumar as well, and so we have a, and I'm sorry I missed the, the meeting last week, I was out of town, so I, I, I hate that. But I know, uh, Councilmember Prim Kumar, um, you know, he, he's my wingman over there, and, and he did a great job of, of, uh, you know, delivering the city update last week. But I just want to say, thank you guys for all you do, and, um, looking forward to many, many more years of, uh, hanging out at the senior center with, with my mom, I guess, so, yeah, there you go.
Councilmember Prim Kumar?
Thank you, mayor. Um, Councilmember Nevils, last time you missed it, and they said that was the best session ever. So I don't, I don't know.
You know, they told me the exact same thing, which was disturbing, so.
Um, I, I appreciate the time that, uh, we get to spend at the senior center. Um, you guys ha, are, are vocal with your unique point of view, and we appreciate that because we need to get your, you know, different, uh, ideas come in. And what I really like about coming to senior center is that you're open to have a dialogue. Uh, you're, you're willing to disagree and, and argue with us, uh, when, when it's needed, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just wanted to.
if you're a senior and you want to participate, come on by.
So, thank you very much, guys. We really appreciate it, and whenever I decide to retire, you will see me down there, so thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, you want a picture? Okay.
Look at, look at, taking a picture. And then we have others that want pictures.
Okay, now me. Everybody ready? All right, big smiles, and three, two, one, and one more. Spectacular. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mayor.
Lucas, did you get yours?
Okay.
Hey, Mayor, I just, I wanted to remind everybody that our Senior and Community Center is for 50 and above, while in other places, restaurants, it might be a different age. It is 50 and above. Remind me, it is $10 a year for a membership. Is that still right?
For residents.
For residents. And 20 for non-residents. There are exercise classes, there's workout equipment, there's a lot of activities, and so I just want to remind people that that's what we're celebrating, is a place for community. So, just FYI.
It sounded to me like you were advertising for a job down there.
No, I'm reminding myself that I need to join.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, item number six on our agenda is a presentation regarding the successful accreditation of the Public Works Department by the American Public Works Association. We have with us, looks like a large number of visitors that Mr. Garza is going to introduce personally. No? Oh, sorry. I believe that we have District Director Christina Ramirez here as well, so I'll let you guys tag-team this one.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Yes, tonight with us, we have Christina Ramirez. She's the Regional Director for the National American Public Works Association. She has a short presentation to provide.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and the public here. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize the professional accomplishments of Capella, Public Works Department. I apologize, I was struggling with that earlier. For the residents and others in attendance and those watching virtually, your Public Works Department is essential to the operation of your city and has earned recognition that very few public works agencies across North America have been able to achieve. The dedicated public servants in your Public Works Department provide a wide range of core services that support daily life and long-term community well-being. The department is responsible for maintaining streets and sidewalks, managing your water and wastewater systems, overseeing traffic operations, and ensuring effective stormwater drainage. These public works professionals place a central role in planning and executing capital improvement projects, which is instrumental in maintaining the city's infrastructure as, as your city grows. With a focus on quality and efficiency as well as sustainability, the city's Public Works Department contributes significantly to the high standards of living your residents enjoy. And speaking of high standards, accreditation by the American Public Works Association is a mark of professionalism indicating public works agencies have made the commitment to continue, continuous improvement in the delivery of public works operations and services in the community it serves. Accreditation is such a high achievement that several local branch and state chapter leaders from the American Public Works Association are also in attendance, as well as several of your Public Works Department staff, not just the members of APWA, but the staff that have actually been doing the work here in your city. And so, for, for just a moment, I would like for you all to raise your hands so we all know who you are. APWA accreditation recognizes an agency's policies, procedures, and practices which have been evaluated against nationally-recognized management practices determined to be appropriate for your specific agency. Currently, there are 223 accredited agencies in North America, 176 organizations, 22 accredited agencies here in Texas, 14 of those beside yourself are in North Texas. So, we are very proud of the work that you have put together and invested in your city. A team of evaluators of experienced public works professionals from Kansas, Illinois, and Utah reviewed 352 practices to confirm your department's compliance with internationally-recognized management practices applicable to your operations and responsibilities. I am proud to report that your department achieved full compliance with all applicable practices. During the evaluation, in fact, there were six new model practices identified. The evaluators identified these practices as outstanding and worthy of other applicants and accredited agencies to use as an example. So, those who are already accredited, when they come back and do their renewal, they will have to be as good as you in order to receive their renewal. So, I'd like to share with you briefly what a few, what those model practices were, because I know we have several of those department staffs here with us tonight as well. The first one had to do with how you go about defining and redefining and evaluating your mission, vision, and values that are important not only to your community, but as well as the Public Works Department. The second one had to do with human resource management. Your career development and succession planning practices and procedures, more specifically the 4C Success Handbook, is an innovative framework that ties competencies and career planning to the agency's core values. We also had recognition in communication, media relations, and what that is, is your annex or how you go about responding to emergencies, has a very detailed analysis and procedure on how your public works agency responds and works with police and fire. The fourth one was your IT, telecommunications, utilizing SharePoint in a way that no other public works agency has in, in North America. Facilities management component replacement, now this one I was impressed with. This is your five-year forecast division detail along with the SOP that provides your clear path for component replacement, helps during budgeting, helps keep the, the components in line, make sure that you're always operating with the, with the best. And then the last one was drinking water distribution system, sampling and testing. More specifically, this monitoring plan is organized with all the requirements consolidated into one document, and one of the reviewers did indicate this well-put-together plan could benefit many organizations as a model practice. Following the evaluation team's recommendation, the Accreditation Council for APWA granted your Public Works Department full accreditation. Congratulations to your entire Public Works Department, and nice work to your accreditation manager, Renee Essis, as well as Deputy City Manager Kent Collins, who I was told before the meeting helped kick off this initiative. All of your staff has done a great job, and as the current American Public Works Association National Board Member, representing Region Seven, and for those who may not know, that's New Mexico, Arizona, Oklahoma, and Texas, it is my honor to present this plaque to your Director, Mike Garza, to recognize this achievement. And, there we go, as he approaches and finds the plaque, I would like to point out that Mr. Garza here is a graduate of APWA's Public Works Institute of Texas, and so he is a proven leader in our profession, and you all are very fortunate to have him on your staff. I would also like to take this time to extend my sincere gratitude to each of you, each council member, as well as the mayor, the, the city manager, the deputy city manager, as well as your city's management team, for your proactive approach and unwavering support of the public works profession. Your leadership has directly resulted in high-quality infrastructure, exceptional workforce, and a thriving community.
All right, we're going to need everybody to scoot in just a little bit more in front if we can. That will work, just going to back up. Everybody hold, everybody keep those smiles, it's okay. Just a second. All right. In three, two, one, and one more. And I think you want to go, do you?
Thank you.
So, Mr. Garza, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Sure, quickly, I do want to say thank you to the Mayor, council, and the city manager's office for your support of our Public Works Department. My special thanks to Kent for setting the foundation for this accreditation, and a really special thanks to the Public Works team that did all the hard work to put this together to achieve this accomplishment, so I'm very thankful for the team that we have.
Well, I'd like to thank your, your few associates from the area that came in with the American Public Works Association.
That's right, yes, I forgot to mention, we have several folks from the APWA that are, that are here to support us, from Quiddity, Freeza Nichols, and where else? I thought I saw a couple more. But, but thank, yes, thank them for, I thank them for coming in and supporting us as well.
So, I'm absolutely just overwhelmed with the amount of work that it must have taken to get this done, so it makes me wonder where you were doing your real work, but that's, we'll, we'll handle that one some other time. But congratulations on the accomplishment. You know, we, we love to see our, our staff and our employees, you know, excelling and showing how good they are, and I think this is a perfect example of, you know, excelling at what you do, so, council, anybody, Councilmember Neville's.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think weekend and week out, we see, you know, the work that gets done, you know, we see the, you know, the, the long-term planning that it takes to, to execute at a high level like our Public Works Department does. What I love about this is now the community gets to see that, and this is such a great accomplishment, and I, I know you guys got to be just over the moon excited about this, but it's just confirming what we already knew, that we have such an amazing team in our Public Works, you know, department. All the team members, you know, I love when we get to hang out and, you know, during Public Works Month and, you know, come there and, and have lunch and just sit and hang out and learn about what you guys do and stuff, and we are very much in your debt for keeping, you know, keeping the water running, keeping things nice and clean in our community, and we can't thank you guys enough for all of you do, so thank you guys very much, appreciate y'all.
And he likes your T-shirts too, so.
They're the best. No, the T-shirts are the best that you guys have.
Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I just wanted to say, you know, it, it doesn't surprise me at all that not only are you being accredited in this way, but you're being called out for setting model standards that other cities can follow and other public works departments can follow, and that's a real testament to you and your team, the quality work that you do. You know, the fact is, so much of what you do is not seen or known by anyone that's even there until something goes wrong, and thanks to you and your team, hardly anything ever goes wrong. So, I just want to thank y'all for your excellent work. Y'all do a wonderful job, and we're very proud of you and very thankful for all your hard work and all, all of your good planning and your good thinking. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hino Jose Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. You articulated that very well, but thank y'all for, thank you for being here, and thank you for recognizing all the hard work, and, you know, you and your team and Kent, I know you've laid the foundation for a lot of this, and it really takes a village, you know, and I know that all of you that are here that are in our public works, we don't get a chance to tell you thank you. You guys are doing what you do, and you're passionate about what you do, and, like, this is a huge recognition, and this is an opportunity for us to just say, like, thank you. Thank you, we really appreciate everything that you do, and our community wouldn't be what it is without each and every one of you making it such an amazing place to live. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the reason we got to tonight is because you were already doing a lot of this stuff, and this is just sort of a validation that this is, that you are a model, and you, you have been working on this for years and years. And this really starts with the culture, whether it's with, originally with Kent, and now Mike, and you have James, and you have Aaron, and just on down, there is a culture of wanting to support this community and taking much, much pride in what happens around here, and I think that is applaudable, quite frankly, to, to care that much about this community. And I love it when I hear, and I tried so hard to make sure to communicate back to your staff, when I hear from citizens that they had some interaction out there with you, and it's complimentary because you knew exactly what you were doing. Sometimes it's not, sometimes tensions can be high because of whatever the situation is, because that means probably something is wrong somewhere, but the way that your staff interacts with the community and solves the problem and listens to the community, it's, I don't know how many times I've had people say, we had incredible interactions with the staff. So, to any of the staff that is here, thank you, thank you, thank you for being sort of on that front line and showing how much city staff cares for this community and what you do for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to, you know, just once again, thank you for all the work that you and your staff have done, and I think the Mayor Protem summed it up, you've been doing this for a long time, and it's, it's, you know, now time to take the, at least the recognition, so thank you very much. I'd like to thank Ms. Ramirez for coming up and, and presenting the award. That was a long road trip for you, so thank you for coming up, and then all of the, the visitors and associates you have coming in from other areas, thank you very much, guys, appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, so, Mike, did you have any closing, or are you done?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Mr. City Manager, we need to do one of these every, every meeting. No? Okay. Now, item number seven is our citizens' appearance. In order to maintain an orderly and respectful meeting environment and to conduct the public meetings and business, speakers will adhere to the standards outlined in ordinance 2025-1633. There will be no comments or deliberations from the City Council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Persons wishing to speak must sign
Thank you, Mayor. You articulated that very well, but thank y'all for, thank you for being here and thank you for recognizing all the hard work, and, you know, you and your team and Kent, I know you've laid the foundation for a lot of this, and it really takes a village, you know, and I know that all of you that are here that are in our public works, we don't get a chance to tell you thank you. You guys are doing what you do and you're passionate about what you do, and, like, this is a huge recognition, and this is an opportunity for us to just say, like, thank you, thank you, we really appreciate everything that you do, and our community wouldn't be what it is without each and every one of you making it such an amazing place to live, so thank you.
Mayor Protem Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason we got to tonight is because you were already doing a lot of this stuff, and this is just sort of a validation that this is, that you are a model, and you have been working on this for years and years. And this really starts with the culture, whether it's with, originally with Kent, and now Mike, and you have James, and you have Aaron, and just on down, there is a culture of wanting to support this community and taking much, much pride in what happens around here. And I think that is applaudable, quite frankly, to care that much about this community. And I love it when I hear, and I tried so hard to make sure to communicate back to your staff, when I hear from citizens that they had some interaction out there with you, and it's complimentary because you knew exactly what you were doing, sometimes it's not, sometimes tensions can be high because of whatever the situation is, because that means probably something is wrong somewhere, but the way that your staff interacts with the community and solves the problem and listens to the community, it's, I don't know how many times I've had people say, "We had incredible interactions with the staff." So to any of the staff that is here, thank you, thank you, thank you for being sort of on that front line and showing how much city staff cares for this community and what you do for this, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'd like to, you know, just once again, thank you for all the work that you and your staff have done, and I think the mayor Protem summed it up, you've been doing this for a long time, and it's, you know, now time to take the, at least the recognition, so thank you very much. I'd like to thank Ms. Ramirez for coming up and presenting the award, that was a long road trip for you, so thank you for coming up, and then all of the visitors and associates you have coming in from other areas, thank you very much, guys, appreciate it, ladies and gentlemen. So, Mike, did you have any closing, or are you done?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Mr. City Manager, we need to do one of these every meeting. No, okay. Item number seven is our citizen appearance. In order to maintain an orderly and respectful meeting environment and to conduct the public meetings and business, speakers will adhere to the standards outlined in ordinance 2025-1633. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address. Presentations by individuals should be limited to three minutes each, during which time the speakers must remain at the podium, face forward, and address the mayor and council. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. We do have three speakers this evening, and our first one is Ms. Mercedes Hall. Name an address for the record, please.
Mercedes Hall, 483 Grace Lane, Capel, Texas. Good evening, Mayor, councilmen and women, and our community. My name is Mercedes Hall, and I'm honored to serve as the charter president of the new Kiwanis Club of Capel. Tonight, I want to share three exciting opportunities to serve, collaborate, and strengthen our community. First, our Kiwanis Club is growing, and we're accepting new application, new members and nominations for board positions. If you have a heart for service and a desire to make a difference in the lives of our community and our children, we need you. Our club elections for the 2025-2026 year are this Thursday, September 11th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Metro Crest Community Church, and we encourage you to join us, nominate a leader, or learn how you can play a part. For inquiries or nominations, message us directly at facebook.com/capelkiwanis. Second, I'm thrilled to announce that the Kiwanis Club of Capel is spearheading a collaborative effort with the Capel Rotary Club, Capel Lions Club, Capel High School Leo's Club, and our soon-to-charter Capel High School Key Club for Celebrate Community Week, happening September 14th to 20th, 2025. This annual event unites service organizations to ignite relationships and make a lasting impact. This year, our focus is on health and wellness, with a special emphasis on mental health awareness and suicide prevention. Together, we're partnering with Reach Equilibria, a new student-led nonprofit right here in Capel, dedicated to mental health awareness and suicide prevention. Hi, guys. Mental health matters, and as September is Suicide Prevention Month, this initiative couldn't be more timely. Through events, resources, and partnerships, we aim to break the stigma, spread awareness, and support teens and young adults in our community. I invite you to join us in this week of service and advocacy. Let's hashtag celebrate community and show that hashtag capel cares by coming together to make a difference. Finally, I'm excited to share that our Capel High School Key Club is close to chartering. Key Club is the world's largest high school service organization, empowering students to lead with compassion and serve their communities. These young leaders are eager to get to work, but they need support from parents, educators, and community mentors to help them thrive. Here's how you can help. One, join our Kiwanis Club of Capel as a member or advisor. Two, support Celebrate Community Week by attending or volunteering at our events, find us online. And three, encourage and guide our Key Club students as they step into leadership roles. Together, we can make Capel a place where every child has the opportunity to serve, lead, and belong. Join us Thursday, the 11th of September, 6:00 p.m. at Metro Crest Community Church. Message us at facebook.com/capelkiwanis for more information. Let's build a better future starting today. Thank you for your time and your commitment to this wonderful community.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our second speaker is Mr. Eddie Haas.
Good evening. Eddie Haas, 159 Meadow Glen Circle here in Capel, different view from down here, but actually, I just wanted to call and, come up and commend our public works department, the leadership of the department, Mike Garza, for all the work they've done to earn this award. It's a testament to his leadership, it's a testament to the culture of our community and what our city manager and the leadership team brings to our community. In my professional role, I work with a lot of cities across the metroplex, across the state, and we truly have a tremendous staff. So the standard here is a testament to all the good work that we do, so I just wanted to say congratulations and kudos to all the things that were said earlier, that's all.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our third and last speaker is Mr. Thomas Burrows.
Thomas Burrows, 138 Win Page Drive. You know, I checked this book out recently out of the library, and this page here, Forty-Eight Minutes Shine Mountain Complex, Colorado, which I actually worked in one time, this book is full of trash, absolute trash about nuclear war, as having a top-secret extensive background investigations and working in this, I know a little bit about this, I was even inside the mountain, as we called it, on September 27th, 1983, when that Able Archer incident happened. Go look it up. Per our code enforcement, down at the bottom end of the town, the grass is all growing up, at Salons on the Creek, the limbs are around the lights. In fact, there's a busted-out light that's been there for six months. I've pointed it out numerous times to his assistant, and I guess nothing happens. Grass all over the place, Van Bever, the old car wash there, grass is this high, you know. And last but not least, two weeks ago, or maybe it was a week ago, I was on a cruise, there was this person who's driving through Dallas, and this tree fell over, and now she's a quadriplegic. So happens that the tree is owned by a tree hugger person, and I grew up in East Texas, and I like trees as much as I can. Next to 711, there's a tree with a big limb growing out over Sandy Lake. It's dead. I have turned this in five times, that I know of, so I'm here to let it be known, it's on TV and all that stuff, that when that limb falls and kills somebody or paralyzes them, that you people all were informed of this, and I sure hope your civil liability is good, because, you know, I don't know what happens when, what's happening with this person in Dallas that the tree fell over, the person that owned the tree said, "Oh, it's an act of God." Well, this is not an act of God, it's called negligence. The limb is up there, it needs to be removed. I would go cut the thing, except I would, I'm scared I'd be arrested or something like that. So anyway, if I had been on the board for doing the library stuff, this book would've never made it in there, because it's full of inaccuracies, and it slams our country's nuclear deterrence. Not that most of you ever wake up every day and think about nuclear deterrence, but I did for about four years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. This is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We have had a request to pull item S separately, so we will consider items A through R. Counselor, are there any other questions or comments or other items that you would care to have pulled? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Council member Neville's.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through R, as presented.
Thank you very much. Second about council member Prem Kumar, all in favor?
Walker and I host of Smith, Carol Neville's, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, all in favor, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now, item S is, I'd like to ask Mr. Hager to come forward. There he is. This is Consider Approval of a Resolution Requesting the Texas Municipal League Seek Legislation Providing Statutory Clarity for Municipal Actions to Maintain Order and Decorum During Citizen Comment Periods While Upholding Constitutional Protections and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign. This was my initiative, and this was solely to provide the city a level of guarantee among past the ordinance that we passed a couple of meetings ago, asking TML, this is a resolution that will go to Texas Municipal League, that asking for their support before it goes to Austin with the House of Representatives. Mr. Hager, did you have anything further to comment on?
Mayor, as previously alluded to in discussions with the council, this item is only for the purpose of, I believe, to basically statutorily provide for the constitutional protections of reasonable place, safety, type of, I wanna say, time, place, and manner regulations. This forum is a forum of limited public forum, so the Constitution does provide First Amendment protections that you have the opportunity to have reasonable rules and regulations regarding time, place, and manner. The initiative that's on the agenda tonight would allow the legislature to put those kinds of time, place, and manner regulations specifically in the statute for the benefit of really the public, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Hager or myself? I will say that I have approached this resolution with other mayors in the area, including Lewisville, Carrollton, Farmers Branch, Addison, and Plano, and they are all supportive and think this is something that would benefit them as well. Council member Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hager, thanks for answering my questions during the work session. Two council meetings ago, I had expressed that my biggest concern was the potential for the city to be caught into lawsuit. I see this measure as something that will protect the city, or at least offer additional protection from being sued, so I think I'm going to be in support of this measure, thank you.
Council member Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason that I asked this to be pulled off of the consent agenda is because I don't support it as written. You know, in my view, the best possible governance is local governance, it's the governance of people by the folks that live with them, shop with them, commute with them, and that are closest to them, that live in the same community they live in, they experience the same situation, the same experiences living in that community that everyone else does. And so, for several years now, we've seen our state legislature slowly erode the authority of home-rule cities. Specifically, we've seen them take away authority for us as a city council to make decisions that are important, not only to the citizens of this community, but that reflect so many times the very fabric and unique nature and characteristics of our community as distinct from other communities. And I believe we should have that authority. And so, you know, the reason that I didn't pull the items on Q and R is because Q, of course, refers to reducing the posting with respect to the local government code regarding our municipal budget. Well, that's an example where Austin provided a time limit that's not reasonable, and so we're trying to petition them to give us a little bit more of a buffer, a little bit more of a chance to make the decisions we need to make with respect to our tax rate and our budget. Item R, you know, we're asking them to provide a change to the law where right now they treat e-bikes, which can go as fast as 40 to 50 miles an hour, as bicycles, and we can't regulate them in any way different than we're regulating bicycles. And so, we can't do anything without a change in that state law. But here, on S, we're petitioning the state legislature to provide statutory clarity for municipal actions to maintain order and decorum, and I don't really know what Austin would do with that. It's so nebulous and so vague that they couldn't even decide to give even more restrictive, you know, type of, more restrictions than we would want. And as a huge proponent of the First Amendment, I don't really favor any restrictions on citizens' appearance. I've sat up here just in the two and a half years I've been on council, and I've listened to some speakers that I absolutely was appalled by what they said, I totally disagreed with it, but they absolutely have the right to say it. And with respect to the young people here from the high school and KCBY and the sidekick, you know, I think it's important that they get a lesson for just how valuable the First Amendment truly is. It's one of the most unique rights that any government has ever, you know, allowed its citizens, the right to assemble, the right to petition for grievances, the right to speak your mind. It's the kind of thing that you haven't seen in any other country, not also, you know, legally enforced, within the context of a constitutional republic. So, I don't, I don't really care to ask Austin for permission to do anything, and all I see them doing is constricting our right and our authority to govern this community in a way that is commensurate with what we know to be the wishes and desires of the citizens of this community, the people we shop with, the people we see every day. And the kind of arbitrariness that we get out of Austin with respect to the restrictions they're imposing on home-rule cities, to me, is not constructive. And so, I would not want to create a precedent now of petitioning them to provide us rules and guidelines that might very well infringe on the First Amendment, or that might just open the tap completely in a way that even, even we wouldn't want. So, I think we're the best judge of that, as to what happens at this podium, you know, the second and fourth week of every, of every month, and so for that reason, I oppose it and I'll vote against it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Walker is way more elaborate or well-spoken than I am, but I would also be opposed to this one. We fight, we fight so often for Austin not to be more restrictive with us, and I hate to hand, just walk up and hand them an opportunity to be more restrictive on us, and so I think it is a little bit inconsistent to choose this one to be more restrictive on when we fight all the time so often for them to, quite frankly, stay out of our business, when it really relates to something that is happening in our community. So, therefore, I will also be voting against it.
Council member Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I have a question for you. We are asking the TML to lobby on behalf of us, correct?
We're asking TML to lobby the state legislature on behalf of their member cities, which we are one. This will not be approved, this will not be automatically accepted by TML until the TML membership votes on it, so there's an intermediate step that occurs at TML. This will be heard at the annual meeting in October, and it will be voted on by the membership at TML at that time. If it passes, then TML will represent all of the member cities with this item.
So, how many member cities are signing on to this as far as you know thus far?
So, it is our resolution, and when it goes to TML, I think TML's membership is 1,500 cities or something, so it will be represented either one way or the other by those 1,500.
Okay. Are there any costs associated with them lobbying on our behalf?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, the only, the only cost we incur is our annual membership to TML, which is just automatic for us.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, for the explanation. I'm also opposed to this. Few weeks ago, we had a vote on this. I, like other council members said, council member Walker and Carroll, I do not like the idea of restricting our residents coming here and speaking their mind, it's freedom of speech, and I think I'm opposed to this resolution as well. Thank you.
Council member Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, council member Walker, you were really clear and crystal, you know, in describing that you're opposed to First Amendment infractions, and I'm the same way, I completely align with you on that one. As per my understanding of what we did two weeks ago was not restrict the content, but in the decorum of how something was presented. I did vote against what was proposed two council meetings ago, but with the council having approved that, I feel like now the best path for me is to reduce the liability for the city, and so I just wanted to clarify that one more time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council member Hill.
To be clear, this resolution only addresses maintaining order and decorum. It does nothing to request that we infringe upon anyone's First Amendment's rights, so it's pretty clear. Now, I don't think that Austin is gonna infringe upon people's First Amendment's rights, a lot of them attorneys.
A lot of them are attorneys. They understand it. So, I don't think we're treading on any dangerous ground by making this request.
Thank you very much. Any, Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hill, I appreciate you clarifying what this is about because, you know, I definitely agree with, you know, that we do not want to infringe on anyone's right to free speech. But I think the decorum and how you present that free speech is important. As someone who's received feedback from, you know, recent council meetings about someone dressed up as a movie character, that, you know, their face was covered in makeup, you know, there were allusions to the fact that they did not understand what that person's intentions were, you know, why were they covering their face? Were they, did they have a, you know, a, like, some sort of, you know, ill-conceived, you know, plan that they wanted to try to execute here? So, I am all for free speech. I want people to come up here and share their thoughts and ideas, but I want to do it, I want to make sure that they present their ideas in a way that is still welcoming, inviting to the public. And as we had two ladies in the audience, they said, I didn't know if that person was, had a weapon on them, or they were intending to hurt anyone. I want everyone to be, to feel welcome when they come through these chamber doors, to feel like this is a safe place where they can observe government happening, observe us representing them, and not feel like that they have to look behind their shoulders. So, that's why I'll be supporting this, because I do think that we need to shore that up a little bit, and I would love to make sure that all municipalities across the state of Texas have that same sense of safety and security.
Thank you very much. Just a comment from me. I took this, I took your comments from our work session very seriously about the liability of lawsuits and so forth, and this was one of the ways that we could minimize or mitigate that risk. It's not going to make it go away completely. As we've stated many times, you can be sued for almost anything, but this will give us one level of protection that we don't currently have. So, I appreciate all the comments and all the diverse opinions. As usual, this is a democratic process, and not everyone is going to feel the same way about every issue. So, I appreciate all the open comments.
Councilmember Neves.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item S as presented.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Councilmember Hina Jose Smith. I think it's appropriate to call for any further final discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
All in favor, Hina Jose Smith. Neves, Pram Kumar, Hill.
Thank you very much. Oh, opposed?
All opposed. Walker, Carol, Matthew.
So, thank you very much for filling in tonight. You also state the nature of the motion.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are dealing with a first time up here, so thank you very much for putting up with us. Council, thank you very much. Just, this is comment concomitant to Councilmember Matthew. This will go to TML. It has to be heard by the TML, well, first of all, the TML has to accept it. Then it will be heard by the membership in October, and there will be a vote on it at that point. If it is approved, then it would be presented as sponsored by TML at the next legislative session. So, we're not, I mean, there's, this is a whole process that we go through. So, thank you for your consideration on this. Our next agenda item is a public hearing, number nine, so I open the public hearing and consider, I'll let Mary read this one into the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number nine is a public hearing. It's considered approval of PD 223 R2-C for Lot 12R to amend the detailed plan development to allow for a warehouse distribution center for 100% of the floor area without any retail use for 1090 East Sandy Lake Road for a goodwill donation drop-off only with the drive-through facility located at 1090 East Sandy Lake Road at the request of the property owner. So, again, good evening, Mayor and Council. This request is for property identified as Lot 12R and has one building containing two suites, 1080 and 1090 East Sandy Lake Road. The western portion of the building has been a pizza restaurant occupied by various entities and is currently occupied by Marco's Pizza. The adjacent suite on the eastern end of the building is addressed 1090 East Sandy Lake Road and is currently vacant. The 2,500 square foot portion of the building also contains a drive-through. The applicant is proposing to have a goodwill donation drop-off only where donations would be dropped off at the front parking area and via the drive-through. So, as I mentioned, there is a drive-through lane. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday from 10 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There is a roll-up door at the rear of the building, identified in the red, where the goodwill box trucks will pick up the items from this location and transport it to another location for sorting and redistribution to their retail facilities. And the yellow represents the storage area within that unit. So, here are some pictures of where items would be stored in the wheeled containers, like shown in the photos, unless it's furniture or appliances that actually don't fit into those containers. They are proposing a sign. Minor adjustments will be, need to be made to the sign to make it compliant. That's something that staff will work with if this item is approved. So, here we're looking at an image from the comp plan and future land use plan. The yellow circle represents this location. The commercial zoning district regulations limits the amount of warehousing and distribution to a maximum of 20% of the floor area. The request before you is to use 100% of the floor area for warehousing and distribution of donated items. There is no commercial retail component to this request. As explained in their narrative, items would be dropped off to the site, stored in the building, and then distributed at the main goodwill facilities to be processed, and finally to one of their retail locations. Now, staff has indicated to the applicant that the requested use is in line with properties owned light industrial, not commercial, and that staff would not support the request to convert this commercial site to one that does not provide for any retail or commercial uses and does not provide for the daily shopping, dining, and service needs of the residential neighborhoods as listed in the comp plan and shown on the screen. Furthermore, staff is concerned about illegal dumping and blight, as this can become a magnet for unwanted items, which in turn would negatively impact the area. For these reasons, staff is unable to support the request. Again, because this is a zoning change request, we did send out letters to property owners within 200 feet, as required by state law, additional letters as courtesy notices within 800 feet, and received no responses. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of the request. The city council will need a supermajority vote to approve this request. If the city council were to approve the request, staff would request the following conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during detailed building review. Two, A, that no outside storage of donations would be allowed. Two B, that no trailer, storage containers, or the like would be allowed. And C, that signs must comply with ordinance requirements. That is the end of my presentation, but the applicant is here, and they do have a small presentation to give you as well. Do you have any questions before they do their presentation?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Pram?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Pram Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Poswell, in the neighborhood, is there any other property that is zoned light industrial?
Not in this area that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions, sir? Give us your name and address and...
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Alan Hinckley, 12300 Park Central Drive in Dallas. Thank you tonight for listening to this case and this appeal. As some of you have may have been involved with the city for a period of time, you may recall in 2007 when we rezoned this property to take a blighted gas station that was vacant, and we were able to convince CVS to come to this intersection, as well as Chase Bank, and we were able to clean up this intersection. And so, I wanted to take a minute to just give you some background on Goodwill Dallas. And I think it's important to understand the distinction. So, each of the Goodwills is different. They're independent. So, Goodwill Dallas is an independent, separate entity that serves just the Dallas area. And I just want to step you through some of the background. They've been serving Dallas for over 100 years, and 92 cents of every dollar supports their employees and their training. Mayor, do you mind changing the next line? And I think what's important is they have a new CEO that came from Neiman Marcus. He is driving change at this location, and so, they're going to open 20 new locations that are the express drop-off. This basically fuels their thrift locations. So, this store is intended to basically be for the constituents in Capel in a high net worth, high-income area, so they have convenience to drop this off. And so, we would want a very nice, clean operation that is serving the community, and they don't have any debt. They are well-run. Of all the Goodwill locations, they're one of the best well-run ones, and they just serve North Texas, and they have complete control over their locations. Would you mind doing the next line? So, here are the locations that they're going to try to roll out. They have Frisco, that's going to be open in a few days, Plano, Highland Village, and other ones. They are going in retail locations, primarily cleaners that have drive-throughs that are vacant. The cleaners business has changed quite a bit over the years, and we also have struggled with leasing that space. That cleaner's closed in 2019. We're pushing six years. The same leasing team that we work with, that brought us Jason's and Kava and other ones, we've worked very diligently to bring a good location here. And Trader Joe's is also one that we brought to Capel. And so, I think our track record is good in Capel. We keep our centers clean. We are going to be very diligent. I'm not concerned at all about any of things being left. You know, you can find anything on the internet. Number one, there's cameras there. Number two, we just take good care of our properties, and the tenants require to do that. Do you mind doing the next line? So, the other thing I think is important is this really diverts a lot of waste into the landfill, how they recycle it. So, I think it's important to know that, and it's a valet service. You pull up, they unload it, and do that. And I've used Goodwill, I have four children, and when they go to college, we've used them quite a bit. Next slide. And so, we've seen, obviously, the picture on the inside and different things. It's a clean operation, and I think it'll be well-received. And just, would you take me two more slides back, the next one after that? So, our adjacency here, we also have the landscaping business and the water towers there. So, I just wanted to point that out. But the other thing I think you want to think about is, just seriously consider, is chronic vacancy is also a problem. And I don't think it's good to have vacancy for a long period of time. We've had some issues in Capel, north of Beltline and MacArthur on the west side, north of that area. And I just think it's important that we try to have good, high-quality, financially solvent tenants that come in this area. So, I just respectfully ask that you give this serious thought. Grateful for your service, and just appreciate that respectfully, we would ask for approval tonight. I also have the Director of Goodwill here tonight, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Hinckley? Councilmember Hina Jose Smith.
Thank you. Good to see you, sir. It's been a while. I'm worried about the hours that are noted and just thinking about the street, and we've got an elementary near there. So, do we have any idea as far as, like, when do drop-offs usually happen? I don't know. Maybe you, she's ready to, like, check. That would be really helpful, just to understand, because I think it's 7 to 7? Is that what it was?
Yeah, it's 7:30 to 7:00 p.m. And so, they happen pretty much all throughout the day. When I worked at the donation center in Mockingbird, we didn't have many people in the mornings. Most of it happened around noon-ish, but it'll depend on the location for sure. But it's typically lighter around opening and around closing.
Okay.
Could you, excuse me, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, Mackenzie Marinovich, 4320 Fairfax in Dallas.
Thank you.
Is this a, is this in addition to a location that already exists, or y'all, like, replacing a location that exists? Because I'm trying to figure out, like, when we think of traffic in this area...
No, so this is not replacing any location.
It's addition to?
We go back to that slide where we're opening all the other ones. This is a new effort by our CEO. So, we have a location in Carrollton, which is just north, that we're going to be opening. But other than that, these are all new. It's a new concept for us, so we're excited.
Okay. And then, how many people do you usually have working there at any given time? I presume, like, working and volunteering?
Yes, so we usually have one to two. We have one person in the morning and one person around closing, and then there'll be two people throughout the busier hours in the afternoon.
Okay. And then, is part of their role to also, like, we know that people will drop things off even after hours, so are they also, like, monitoring the outside and making sure that all of that is picked up?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, that's all for now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mayor Pram, Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, can you say again how this location was chosen rather than a location that's actually zoned for this type of operation?
Yes, so, we find that all of our donors want to give back, but they only want to give back if it's convenient. Otherwise, it sits in your car for days. That happened to me when I first moved here out of college. I had bags and bags in my car, and I just did not go until I finally found one that drove by. So, we like having it in retail areas because it's convenient to our donor, and we find that it's just the most, I mean, it's the most convenient place, and they're already running errands, so why not do this on their way to the cleaners?
And some of the other cities that have already approved them, they're in retail areas rather than, rather than in appropriately zoned areas?
They're 100% in retail zoned areas, every single one of those.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And they're not industrial.
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if I heard you correctly in your presentation, I believe you said, was it the Frisco location that's just going to open in a couple of days?
Yes, probably a few weeks. We're waiting on signage.
A few weeks, okay.
Yeah.
No worries. So, this, you said this concept is a newer concept, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, do you have, I guess, if this is a newer concept, so we don't have any, like, I guess, data or anything about, like, how these fit into commercial areas and what, like, our, you know, the neighboring businesses think about this concept and things like that? Do you have any kind of data or studies that show how these fit in, like, otherwise commercial zones? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah.
It is. It is. So, I think it's hard to quantify, because just like when you drive by centers, right, people are looking for certain uses. And I think in Capel, y'all make the distinction because of the inventory sizing that it falls in line industrial. Some other cities don't have that situation, which is why we're here. But from our perspective, it walks and talks kind of like retail. Obviously, you're not selling anything. By code, we could probably put a thrift store here if it was retail. It's just the demographics aren't correct for one of those thrift stores. So, the whole purpose is to serve Capel, not bring people to it. It's to serve Capel so those donations go to the Dallas stores.
Excellent. So, but just to kind of, kind of go back to my original question, but we don't have any, like, data to see, like, how it, like, has this concept been explored in other areas of the country or anything like that? That's kind of...
Yes, so this beautiful location, which is my favorite, is actually in Atlanta.
Okay.
And it's just down the street from where my mom lives, and it's, I mean, it's incredible. This is what I aspire ours to look like, so it's a good snapshot of them. I don't have any data, per se, of what has come of these, but I do know that the higher the income area, the more donations that we get.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Question...
Question for Mary. Do we have any donation center in Capel using retail space?
Not that I'm aware of. So I will say, right, so based on our definition, which only allows for 20% of warehousing, this type of use wouldn't be allowed in the retail centers. So that's why they're asking for PD condition to allow 100%. But by ordinance and also by our comp plan and land use plan, it does not fit, and that's why staff is not supporting it.
Do we have any store, non-retail, donation places, non-retail?
Not that I'm aware of. Someone else may know.
So this will be the first one?
Of a store, yes.
Okay. And I see was the denial from P&amp;Z 422. What was their sentiment? I didn't watch the video.
I think the major, the major part was the, was the donations and creating potentially the storage or outside blight, because it is one of our main intersections in town. But other than that, you'd have to ask them individually, but that was what was discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hina Hossas Smith.
I have a follow-up question to Councilmember Matthew. So do we have any other areas where, I guess it would be industrial and retail together, like this? I don't want to call it mixed use, but something like that. Okay. And then here's my other question. If this were to be approved, right, and therefore it would, this particular area would be zoned industrial while the...
It's not zoned. It would not, we're not trying to zone it industrial.
What would we zone it? I'm sorry.
So it's modifying the amount of warehousing that is allowed within that commercial district for that address.
Okay. And what I'm, where I'm going, so thank you for that clarification, because where I'm going is, I always think about to highest and best use of an area, right? And then also thinking about, we want you to be successful, but let's just say that we, it gets approved, and then it, they decide to move somewhere else, right? Then that particular space will now have, will be used...
Has that zoning on it?
The zoning is different, right?
Correct.
So, okay.
Because the zoning stays with the land.
With the land, right. That's what I kind of want to think about, and what that does to that particular piece. Okay. Thank you.
Council, any other questions?
Let me go down. Mr. Hinckley, you wanted to address my question.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent question. And from the owner's perspective, it's tied to Goodwill. We have no interest whatsoever in changing that. To me, if Goodwill goes away, you could make the PD subject to that, subject to that tenant.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I actually do have another question for y'all. I know that there are other areas where in Capel that you can drop off for Goodwill. I think there's, like, bins, are there not? Yeah, I think there is. There's people that are shaking their head, yes. I thought there were, like, in parking lots and other areas.
Those do not belong to Goodwill, unless she's at Dallas.
Oh, they're not Goodwill. Okay, well, there you go. I thought, I was going to say, because my question was, would this then replace that? And so, okay, where's the next closest location to Capel right now that y'all are located? To the map? Is it Carrollton?
It will be. We're negotiating that lease right now.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
I just want to make a clarification, that zoning, unless you go and rezone it, that zoning would stay there. You can't just make it subject to Goodwill being there.
Right, right. And that's what I want to do. Thank you. Sorry.
All right. So thank you very much. Appreciate your input. We had no, the next item is comments, or persons signed up to speak. We had nobody signed up to speak against this. So that puts it back on the council for comments and questions. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, obviously, Goodwill's done an awful lot of good for an awful lot of people for a very long time, and I don't, I don't question that at all. It's a wonderful organization. But to me, this is too much of a square peg in a round hole problem. You know, that's one of our main streets coming in to town. CCA has a drive-through, but it's just north of town, and it's in a light industrial district. And then I just don't think that a PD allowing for a light industrial use effectively with respect to the warehousing percentage is appropriate for what, in my opinion, is a purely retail space. It's next to a pizza place, it's next to a CVS, it's next to a Chase branch and a donut shop. So I would, I would be opposed to putting this type of operation in because it requires this particular PD and because the PD would remain with the property if the individual or the entity that owns that property was to sell it while Goodwill was a tenant. And if Goodwill was to leave, then the PD would remain. And we would then require the new owner to come in, to a large extent, and then request the PD be changed. And I don't know that that would happen once we let it go light industrial as a practical matter. So I, I value Goodwill's contributions. I value everything they've done for our society and our culture all these years. I just don't think this is the appropriate location for this type of land use, and for that reason, I would, I'll be opposed to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is one of our main entrances to the city. Several years ago, P&amp;Z made an exception at the nursery, allowing them to decrease the parking in the front. And now it's just junked up with stacks and stacks of soil. So, you know, the next thing, we're going to have, you know, potential accumulation of unwanted items that are going to build up after hours, you know, on Sundays, and become, you know, a blight on that corner. And I think it just makes a really bad precedent to continue this and allow this, this type of use in that space. You know, there are lots of locations throughout the industrial section of town where they could put this, you know, I do support it. You know, I drive to Metrocrest quite frequently and make my drop-offs in Carrollton. I mean, you know, if people have things, they will, they will go and donate them. So I don't think it's appropriate right there in that retail center. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments or questions by the council? Do you have a question? Comment. Councilmember Hina Hossas Smith.
I mean, I can ask a question if you want me to, but, no, in all seriousness, I can, just echoing Councilmember Walker and Hill, so I also value Goodwill. I mean, Goodwill does a lot of great things, so this is not about Goodwill, it's about the location. I just don't think that it's the highest and best use. And while that location has been, that piece has been empty for a while, sometimes we just have to wait for the right use in that particular space. So I worry about traffic, I worry about people dropping things off, and it, again, it is an entrance of our city, and so I want to be thoughtful of that. And so with that said, I will be opposing this.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion with a reminder or a polite request to make the motion in the positive, regardless of how you are going to vote on the agenda item. So with that being said, Councilmember Neville's?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve Agenda Item 9 with conditions as presented.
Thank you. I have a second from Councilmember Hina Hossas Smith. All opposed?
Walker, Hina Hossas Smith, Carroll, Neville's, Prekamara, Matthew, Hill. Motion denied.
Thank you very much. All right, Item Number 10 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and consider approval of PD 286 R-R, a zoning change request from PD 286-R to PD-286 R-R. A new detailed plan development revising the current plan development of 286 Retail to allow a detailed plan for two retail restaurant buildings totaling 16,755 square feet on 2.45 acres of property located on the northeast corner of South Denton Tap and the dark right-of-way. Ms. Mary Peron Boswell.
Mayor and council, this is Item 10. So this property's been zoned retail, for retail uses for the last 40 years. In 2017, a PD was approved to allow for two retail buildings and associated parking on this irregularly shaped property. The site backs up to a sloped area with a creek and floodplain. This revised plan still proposes two buildings with a slightly different configuration. There are three proposed driveways onto Denton Tap Road, one that is split between the Grow It property to the north, one in the center that is at a median opening, and one along the southern edge of the property. Both buildings are proposed to have retail and restaurant uses, with the northern building also having a small outdoor patio area. The first requested exception is to allow patios under 500 square feet per building to not require additional parking. Anything over 500 square feet will need to be parked. They are currently showing a 414-square-foot patio area, which would be impacted. This variance has been requested and granted with other projects such as Victory Capel. The buildings will be offset from the road with an access easement in the front yard. The parking is located behind the buildings. The northernmost building is proposed to be approximately 10,206 square feet, and the southernmost building, 6,549 square feet. There's a retaining wall proposed along the southern rear portion of the lot. A masonry screening wall will be constructed on top of the retaining wall, satisfying the screening requirement between commercial and residential to the east. So as I mentioned, there are many easements on the property that limit the size and location of where buildings and parking can be placed. There's a floodplain to the rear of the site, an erosion hazard setback, a drainage easement, and a 20-foot sanitary sewer easement that all exist at the rear side of the property. This request is to develop the property in accordance with provisions of the existing retail zoning district regulations, with a few exceptions. The second requested exception is to allow the landscaping as presented. The overall site is approximately 20% landscaped. The site maintains a 15-foot landscape strip along Denton Tap with a variety of trees to be planted there. This extends around the perimeter of the site. There's a small area to the south that is less than 10 feet wide, as the turning radius of the driveway cuts into it slightly. However, the eastern perimeter makes up for it, as it is over 10 feet for about half the rear length. Additional landscaping is provided within the parking area and in front of the building. As mentioned previously, the site is oddly shaped with a slope, creek, and floodplain along the eastern portion of the site, and has several easement constraints. The applicant is working to preserve trees within the creek area and plant additional trees along the eastern property line. They are asking for a variance to the non-vehicular landscaping requirement, and staff is not opposed to this request. So in terms of elevations, this is Building 1. The buildings face South Denton Tap Road, and the main entrance will be from the backside of the building. Both the east and west sides of the building will mirror one another. The buildings will have a storefront glazing system with metal awnings, which require an exception and has been allowed with other developments. The elevations will contain brown brick and stone with a precast stone parapet. The dumpsters will match the building materials. In terms of signage, none was proposed, so signage will need to comply with ordinance Well, I don't know what's going on, so I'll see. Manny, can you push the slide? There we go. All right. So here's Building 2, essentially Mayor's Building 1. Again, this is a zoning change request. We did send out letters within 200 feet. We did receive one response from the property to the north outlined in the yellow. Essentially, they had questions about drainage from the site, how it would impact their site. And then at Planning and Zoning Commission, we did have one resident that came in to the meeting who was in opposition, and that's outlined in red. He was afraid of people looking into his home. We did send out 800 courtesy notices and received no responses to that. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request, subject to the following conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during detailed engineering review. Two, that the plat must be filed prior to permitting. Three, that a tree removal permit is required. Four, A, that all building signage shall comply with city regulations at time of permitting. Four, B, to allow the landscaping as presented. Four, C, to allow patios under 500 square feet per building to not require additional parking. Four, D, to allow the metal awnings. Four, E, P&amp;Z added another condition for the hours of operation to be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That is the end of my presentation. The applicant is here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Peron Boswell? Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, with respect to the signage, was, did they indicate it when they were before P&amp;Z that they just haven't devised a sign or come up with a sign? Or are they planning on having a sign? Or, I mean, was there anything said about that?
I'm sorry. They just didn't have anything designed at this point in time, so once they have, I believe, tenants, that they would look at signage. They are proposing a monument sign.
Okay, okay.
But there's nothing that was provided to staff to review.
And then was anything done to address the drainage concerns of the adjoining landowner with respect to the difference between the grate and the curb?
Right, so I have engineering staff here to answer the drainage questions. Mr. Garza from staff will answer that question.
Thank you. Yeah, so we haven't received detailed engineering plan review, but once we, once we, once we get the detailed design, we will enforce our ordinance, which requires the site to pick up all drainage runoff prior to exiting their site to another site. So they, we will ensure that they have the proper drainage related to storm drain inlets, whatever type that may be, to pick up all the runoff.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. And that was referencing the east side of the property, correct, on the Denton Tap side?
Correct. So currently, the site essentially drains from south to north, from, half of the site drains from south to north, and then the other half drains kind of south to northeast towards the little tributary that's back there. And so all that runoff that runs to the north is going to have to be collected prior to reaching the neighboring property. It'll be picked up and then discharged out towards the creek.
Is there a potential to drain it off towards the west side? I'm sorry, toward the east side, where it would drain down toward the creek?
Yeah, that's the intent, is to pick up any drainage and then discharge it to the east.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's possible to design that parking lot to accomplish that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Mayor Pro Tim, Carol.
Well, my question's actually possibly been answered, but I just wanted to confirm. So it is possible that the drainage can be picked up, because I do think there's property between that and the creek or whatever, sort of to the north. So it is possible to get that picked up.
Yep.
Okay, accounted for. Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? This is a public hearing, and so persons wishing to speak during this public hearing must have signed the registered and listed address. You will be called in the order that you have registered. Public hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker. We did have one speaker signed up to speak on this, and that's Mr. David Fleischer.
Hello, I'm David Fleischer, 442 Foresting Andrews Boulevard Irving. So first of all, I want to say thank you also, councilpeople and the mayor, for taking time to do this twice a month. I couldn't believe you guys do it twice a month. So I just want to say I'm thrilled to have a neighbor. We've been there 17 years, so I'm really excited that we can have someone that can bring people, and I think will use both businesses. My main concern was the drainage, and it looks like we've addressed it quite a bit there. It's music to my ears, because I think I sent a video. Were you guys able to see that video? And we, it's a waterfall just coming through our land when it rains. So I'm just concerned how they do that four-foot drop, because it's about a four-to-five-foot drop, without messing with the elevation to our property. So it's an easy transition. So it's going to be very interesting to see how that is on drawing. So I did have, our engineer looked at it, and he did have a couple questions about, he wanted to see the final drawing. So I don't know the process of this. Does it, the final drawing get approved first, before it gets approved through city council? Or does the city council approve the plan, and then the fine-tuning goes along with the drainage and the permitting? Because I would like to get, I mean, before everything gets approved, I'd sort of like to have my engineer looking at the drawings also and make sure it's going to not impede runoff onto our property, and when we do sell the property, it's not going to impede that new owner.
I'm not sure, Mary. I'll defer to you.
So tonight, we're looking at the zoning. If the zoning gets approved, then they'll move forward with full engineering construction documents, and that gets reviewed at a staff level. Unless they're asking for some type of variance, council doesn't see it again. It has to comply with all our requirements. And so staff will look at it, approve it, and then they can begin construction.
So would we have any say in that if the elevation is going to impede our trucks going to the back and through the drainage? I just want to make sure the elevation, because it's a five-foot drop, and I'm going, how's that, are they going to divert that water?
So they will have to meet all our ordinance requirements, and they'll work out to make sure that, you know, they're already showing inlets on there to gather up the water and to divert it to where it needs to go. You can talk a little bit more with staff and how, you know, your site matches what they're looking to do. But essentially, when they look at it, they look to make sure that when it's developed, it's going to be better than what's there currently.
I love that. And that's it right there. So I think we can both thrive there. So that was my only main concern. Are we going to be able to see the set of drawings when they're done, so I can show my engineer, independent engineer, to look at it also?
So the drawings aren't available for viewing until they're finally approved.
Wow. So I don't have anything to say then? So they're going to get approved where I can see them?
Well, it's not your property, so it has to comply with our requirements and staff, and I'll let Mike come and answer some more specific questions.
Yeah, it would impede our property if it's not done correctly, is my main concern. I think I do have a right with that, where I can have water from the other property owner come into our property and impede it.
Yeah, so that's correct. Our ordinance doesn't allow for drainage to run onto adjacent property. So as we review the plans, we will go through the design criteria and make sure that they follow our ordinance. And there will be opportunity. We can, you can come in and visit with us to look at the plans. It usually goes through a couple of iterations of review time, and so we'll review them. It usually takes two or three. We'll verify that the drainage criteria meets our ordinances, and we'll give you the opportunity to look at them.
Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, since I've got Mr. Garza up here. Is there anything about the other easements on the northeast side of the property that would affect the engineering design of the drainage?
No, there's, so there's a tributary that runs along that north-south that eventually discharges into Grapevine Creek. I believe there's drainage easements for that, so that the conveyance of the creek can run north-south. So any work, any development that occurs on this site will be contained on their site, and nothing will be impacting the neighboring site to the north. So everything has to be contained on site. The only difference is there is a shared access driveway that's been plotted that runs east-west. So there'll have to be some agreement, shared agreement between the property owners if there's anything done to the driveway, is my understanding based off the agreement from the original shared access.
Is the PD subject to that agreement being reached?
That's a question related to the shared access.
I'm not, not a PD, but is the, is this particular?
It's already existing. That easement is already existing.
Okay, okay. So that's already, so that access is already based on an easement?
Correct, correct.
Right, that's an existing one.
Ah, okay, okay, thank you. Question answered.
Any for me?
No, sir. I don't at least.
Thank you very much. Council, any other comments, questions? Mayor Pro Tim.
Is this all speculative property? Is that, are the retail centers and everything, is it all spec? Or are they already leased, or it's all spec? Okay, all right, thank you.
They're way, they're nodding yes, speculative.
Council, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion. Councilmember Pram Kamara.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to propose that we close the public hearing and approve Item Ten, subject to the PD conditions.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Walker, Hina Hosa Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kamara, Matthew Hill, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item Number Eleven is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Consider approval of PD 324 SF-7, a zoning change request from MF-2 to PD 324 SF-7 to approve a detailed plan to build a 21,054-square-foot one-story addition onto the existing elementary school on 10 acres of property located on the northeast corner of MacArthur Boulevard and Village Parkway at the request of Capel ISD, being represented by Robert Howman Glenn of Glenn Engineering. Ms. Boswell.
Here we go. So Lakeside Elementary was constructed in the early 1990s. It is, for the most part, a two-story building. The new detailed site plan adds a total of 21,000 square feet to the school, spread amongst three different areas. All three area additions will be one-story. So the two additions at the rear of the building on either side of the existing structure, these will include new classrooms, a storm shelter wing with pre-K classrooms, and an art classroom. The two interior courtyard areas will serve as outdoor instructional areas that can be utilized as quasi-playgrounds. They'll have artificial turf and rubberized flooring. The addition near the front of the building will house administration, nursing, and counseling staff. The screening between the school property and Oakwood Lane is a tubular steel fence with brick columns. There are three residential lots that directly above the school property, which would require typically a masonry screening wall, and those are identified in the blue rectangles. The school is not planning on modifying the existing fence and is requesting to allow for an exception to this requirement. The school is proposing to add trees in these areas to act as additional screening. The school is adding landscaping throughout the property. They'll be adding trees along the perimeter and enhancing the tree line adjacent to the three residences along Oakwood Lane. They will also be replacing landscaping that has died over the years. Over half the site is devoted to landscaping, and the proposal complies with the requirements of the landscape section of the zoning ordinance. Here, we're looking at some renderings. The proposed addition has been designed to be integrated into the existing building design and not to look like an awkward addition. The bricks to be used will match the existing brick on the building. The two additions to the rear, as mentioned earlier, will be one-story, and the third addition near the front of the school will also be one-story. They're also proposing a new monument sign with cast aluminum lettering along Village Parkway. Again, this is a zone change request. We sent out 47 letters within 200 feet, additional courtesy notices within 800 feet. We received eight phone calls just essentially asking what was going on, basically telling them that it was an addition to the existing school. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request subject to the following conditions. One, there may be additional comments during the detailed engineering review. Two, a final plat will be required to show the fire lane. Three, A, all signage shall comply with city regulations unless specifically requested and granted. B, to allow the existing fence to remain in lieu of a masonry wall along parts of Oakwood Lane where the school abuts residential property. C, to allow the existing head-to-head parking to remain as nine-by-18 spaces. And then at Planning and Zoning Commission, they added Item D for CISD to conduct a traffic impact and management plan and mitigate any concerns from the increase in schoolchildren attending there. That is the end of my presentation. Someone from the school district is also here, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for Mary? I've got an offhand question for our city attorney, Mr. Hager.
Hopefully, I won't have an offhand answer.
Yes, sir.
So maybe my memory is growing bad over time, but I seem to remember previous cases where schools were exempt from zoning requirements by the city. Am I remembering that wrong?
Partially, partially right, partially wrong. We have limited ability. They do have, we do not get to select where the school wants to be, but we have the right to regulate with reasonable regulations setbacks, height, fencing, landscaping, and related items with regard to traffic.
I remember a case where we didn't have control over a chain-link fence.
That's materials.
Thank you. Like I said, it's been a while. Council, any other questions? Is the applicant in the, oh, yeah, there they are. Would you gentlemen like to come forward and say a word or two?
Good evening. Robert Howman of Glenn Engineering, Senior Designer. With me is Mr. Sid Grant with the school district. We're here to answer any questions you might have. We've read staff comments, and we're in full agreement with them. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I think we have a question for Mr. Neves, Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that Valley Ranch Elementary has had a recent expansion. Is this floor plan pretty much exactly like, like a carbon copy of Valley Ranch Elementary? I understand that's not within our city, but it's in the city of Irving. But is that what this is?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Neves, and thank you all, council. Mayor Sid Grant, Chief Operations Officer for Capel ISD again. Glad to be back and be a part of all of this, and thank you for your time. The, yes, the plans and the layout for Lakeside Elementary are identical to what was recently completed at Valley Ranch Elementary. The only difference would be, obviously, the brick color is different, and the finishes internally will be different, more fitting for the mascot and the colors of the school. But the layout is virtually identical as far, you know, the art room, the storm shelter, the classrooms, and the classrooms associated with the new areas.
And then with that redesign, you know, that's being proposed, what would the capacity of the school increase to, like the total capacity?
It will, it will go from, I always use the term comfortable capacity, because if you take a classroom and you multiply it times 22, then you come up with a much larger number. But the comfortable capacity is currently 600, and with, we are adding a net four additional classrooms that are essentially pre-K classrooms, so that can effectively take it to 680 comfortable capacities. So from 600 to 680.
Excellent, all right. And then I'll say that the only really concern I had when I saw this was with the additional capacity is the potential, how that would affect that traffic patterns and traffic flow and stuff. And I saw a PD condition is to conduct a traffic impact study and management plan. So I think that really addresses my only concern that I had for this. So I'm glad to see that in there, and I think that this would be a fabulous addition to the school. So thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you much.
Council, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Neves, I'm not in agreement with Item D and requiring them to do a traffic impact. It's been a school. They're only adding a few more people. There's going to be traffic. It's a madhouse regardless at, you know, 7:20, 7:30, and at pickup time. So I think it's just asking the school district to spend more money that's unnecessary, especially in these times where we're, you know, so struggling so much with funding. So I don't think we need Item D.
So you are welcome to make a motion and phrase it however you see fit.
I think we, wouldn't we do discussion beforehand, and then I make my motion?
Well, actually, we were open for discussion now, and you were the only one that had any discussion, so I think we're, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and approve Item Number?
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you. With all the conditions listed, except Item D.
Thank you. So that would be Items One, Two, Three A, Three B, and Three C. I have a second from Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, any further discussion on this?
Mayor, just a quick question. Mayor, question?
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry. Mary, was that a staff condition, or was that a condition that was added on by our P and Z?
P and Z, sorry. P and Z added that condition.
P and Z added that condition. All right. Does, can I ask, does staff have any concerns about the traffic impact?
Not at this time.
Okay, excellent. That's, I just wanted to ask, so, thank you.
Councilmember Pram Kamara.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe this question is for the CISD.
Your questions need to be among the council at this point.
I don't know who to direct this question. Does anyone have an estimate of what that cost of traffic impact and management plan would be? Mary?
I'm sorry, that would not be in our purview.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, you're allowed to ask a question. They just, they only have to answer your question. They can't break off and start pontificating on you.
Okay, so, thank you.
So as long as you address a specific
So as long as you address a specific question, they can come up and give you an answer.
All right, so thank you for that.
Outside the public hearing.
Thank you for that correction. Sid or Mr. Howman, would you care to venture an estimate on that?
Generally, we're seeing that the traffic impact analysis of this such would run between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Good job, Mark. All right, any other, Councilmember Hosa Smith? You can make a comment.
Okay. I think my comment is that one of the things I've always appreciated about our community is the partnership with our school district and our city, and so to Councilmember Hill's point is with, with condition three D being taken out of the current motion, I would support that because I think that if we were to need any, anything further in that area, there would be a conversation between those two entities, so I just want to highlight the partnership that we have with our school, so.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Boswell, let's say we approve this motion without three D, and down the road, if we do see a problem, is there anything preventing us from going back and asking for it?
I'm sure that C I S D would be always open to discussion about traffic impacts and what they can do as a partnership with the city. Sid, yes? Yes. So, you know, at P and Z, they did discuss, you know, where they could probably have, instead of one loop, using both loops to mitigate traffic, so they are looking at it themselves regardless of what we're going to do.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? So procedurally, I think I feel obligated to point out that if anybody does feel the need to add in D, you can make in a movement to amend the motion, but otherwise, we will be voting on the motion to approve, to close the public hearing and approve item eleven with the, with the conditions from P and Z of one, two, three, A, B, and C. So I hope that is clear as mud to everybody. So with that being said, all in favor?
Walker, Hosa Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew, Hill. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on, item number twelve is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing, which is consider approval of PD three-oh-one R-seven H C, a zoning change request from PD three-oh-one R-five H C to PD three-oh-one R-seven H C, a new detailed plan development revising the current concept plan to allow a ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-square-foot building for retail and restaurant uses with a single drive-through on one-point-seven acres of land located at the southeast quadrant of South Beltline Road and Dividend Drive at the request of Victory Retail Capella LLC, being represented by Kirkman Engineering LLC. Ms. Boswell.
Okay, so this one-point-seven acre tract is located along the east side of South Beltline Road, just south of Dividend Drive, so this request increases the building size from nine-thousand-and-ninety-five square feet to ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty square feet and removes the second drive-through. The increase in the building size is what necessitates the PD zoning request. This has also required the addition of parking spaces to the rear of the site. The fire riser room has also been relocated outside of the main leasable area to the rear of the building. Access to this lot is from a driveway on South Beltline Road as well as internal access easements running throughout the site. Modifications have been made to the previously approved landscape plan to adjust the property, to adjust to the property line changes. The landscape buffer along South Beltline Road will have overstory trees that we place in the landscape buffer along with a variety of plants, shrubs, ground cover. Additional overstory trees are proposed along the remaining perimeter and parking area of each lot. This also include, this lot also includes a portion of the enhanced linear park area on the east side that was approved with the overall conceptual plan for the entire property. So here we're looking at the elevations. Essentially, the design elements for the building remain the same as previously approved. The overall concept plan is common design elements, colors, materials. On this building, there are two different bricks to be utilized. In addition to the brick, the façades will be a combination of stucco, nichihua, and architectural panels with metal coping, canopies, as well as glazing. So this is the west and north elevation, and then we've got the eastern and southern elevation. Again, we sent out letters within two-hundred feet as required by state law, additional courtesy notices within eight-hundred feet, and we received no responses. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request subject to the following conditions. One, there may be additional comments during detailed engineering review. Two, a plat is required prior to permitting. Three A, that all building signage shall comply with city regulations at time of permitting. Three B, that the linear park on the east portion of the site shall require staff approval. And four, that all PD conditions from the conceptual PD shall apply unless specifically amended within these plans. That is the end of my presentation, and the applicants, engineers here as well, if you have any questions.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Ms. Prem Boswell. So is that the same linear park that's gonna run all the way through north or south on that property?
Correct.
Okay, so that we're just saying that?
It just happened to be part, part of it is part of this lot.
Okay, okay, and, and the main, the main PD for this property or plan for this property, that entire linear park is still subject to staff approval, right?
Correct, and it should, it's proposed to be built with the first phase of development.
Right, okay, so all you're saying here is that that remains true?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Could you tell me when this was originally approved by council?
Yeah, so, let me go back to my notes here. Back in twenty-twenty-three, the concept plan, actually in twenty-twenty-two, the concept plan for the overall site was approved for a combination of retail, restaurant, had a couple different uses, medical, banquet center, daycare, and it's changed over with each iteration. Twenty-twenty-three, the concept plan was revised, which made the retail restaurants bigger. In twenty-twenty-four, revised again. We eliminated some of the restaurant with, without drive-throughs, and more recently, we added two hotels to the site as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Boswell? Does the applicant have anything to say? All right, thank you very much. This is, this is a public hearing, we did not have anybody signed up to speak, so I'll turn it back over to the council for any final questions or comments. Oh, Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to close the public hearing and to approve item twelve, subject to all staff conditions as articulated.
Thank you very much, and I see a second from Mayor Protem Carroll. All in favor?
Walker, Hosa Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew, Hill, all in favor? I'm sorry, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number thirteen is consider approval of resolution and ballot to accept or reject the thirteenth amended Joint Chapter eleven Plan of Reorganization of Purdue Pharma LP and its affiliated debtors and authorizing the mayor to sign. Mr. Hager?
Mayor and council, if I may, Robert Hager, city attorney. I'm here to present this item regarding the Purdue Pharma settlement agreement and its subsequent bankruptcy, as the council is well aware and for the benefit of the public. Purdue Pharma was sued and a class action sued as a result of its manufacturing, marketing, and selling of pharmaceuticals with opioids in them and the promotion of that highly addictive drug and the subsequent national epidemic and the use of things like Oxycontin and Hydrocodone and other opioids. You might ask yourself why I know that. I've had countless surgeries and I get a bottle every time. I cannot take the stuff, thankfully, for me, it makes me ill. But as a result of the highly addictive nature of that drug and its subsequent national addiction problem that we had, they got sued, they settled that lawsuit. As a result of that, cities across the United States, Capella being one, was to receive a settlement, a portion of a settlement agreement through the state attorney general's office of approximately about sixty to seventy thousand dollars based on our population, and it's to be used to combat drug addiction, drug education, those funds are earmarked. After that settlement was reached and we were notified, they filed, they being Purdue in this case, filed bankruptcy, and as a result of that, they had to restructure corporately. It's a Chapter eleven proceeding, so there will be some money received, but it'll be a reduced amount, and then it depends on this election. As you can see, there's been thirteen reiterations of the proposed reorganization agreement. This is the latest version. We, as a member of the class, have a right to vote for it or against it. If this does not pass, then we will see a fourteenth amended plan, and all this does is, how can I say, Mr. Walker, being a lawyer, knows this, that the lawyer who's handling the bankruptcy is the only one that's making any money off this, and so if they have to go back and do another reorganization, the costs of the accounting, the cost of restructuring with the banks and their debtors, and then the correspondent legal fees and time, I think are not worth the amount of money that we're gonna end up receiving, and so I would recommend that we approve and we authorize the mayor and the manager to exercise our franchise to vote for this and get this portion of this over with. I will also, there are other pharmaceutical manufacturing companies with other suits for other tranches of money for us to receive, which will have very similar probably outcomes, so we'll get some, and as well as, I think you have authorized in prior action, all the pharmacies which filled all those prescriptions to our citizens, and so there's a corresponding lawsuit with them as well, which will end up in a settlement and a tranche of money for us to use in a very similar fashion, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hager? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Hill?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item thirteen.
Thank you. And a second by Councilmember Matthew. All in favor?
Walker, Hosa Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew, Hill. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would take a motion to approve, to mission to exercise the franchise to vote in favor of the plan. That's how I received that motion.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not following you.
Well, you either have to vote to deny the plan. I think the motion was intended to vote in favor of approving the plan, not disproving the plan.
I'm sorry, we need to revote. So we need a motion to approve or reject, not to accept the item. I'm sorry.
Accept or reject?
Yes, accept or, yes. Yeah. Well, we approved, we approved item thirteen, we have to approve or reject
Approve the approval.
The, the resolution and ballot.
How about this? I would recommend that we make a motion to approve the acceptance of the thirteenth amended Joint Chapter eleven Reorganization Plan. So moved, right?
So you can, so he's read it into the record, you can say, I so move.
So moved.
All right. A second by Councilmember Matthew, sorry about all this focus.
No, it's all right.
All in favor?
Walker, Hosa Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew, Hill. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, item number fourteen is the city manager reports project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Veterans Plaza, the contractors working on the electrical and irrigation will begin construction on the footings the next, within the next week. Capella Emergency Water Interconnects, contractors beginning work on the MacArthur tie-in with Louisville. The Dog Park, the contractor is continuing to work on the fence installation and grading. Freeport Northwestern Traffic Signal, that signal should be operational in the next couple of weeks, so if you drive that area, beware and obey the laws. And lastly, Snow Cones with Code, Community Development will host their, will host their second, Snow Cones with Code on Friday, September nineteenth. The event will take place at the Cosby Library and Community Commons from one to two-thirty, and come out, learn, meet staff, ask questions, and enjoy a snow cone from Kona Ice, and I do want to acknowledge and thank Cecilia Condra for sitting in the city secretary's seat and covering that, providing that support during the evening tonight.
Well, I was gonna point out that she'd been practicing saying all the names down the council line all week, so this is not, it looks easy, but it's not, so, so, thank you.
Item number fifteen, our mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. Just as a reminder, on Thursday, September eleventh, we have our Patriot Day ceremony, so please come join us on the front steps of Capella Town Center at eight-thirty in the morning to honor those who were killed or injured during the terrorist attack of September eleven, nine-eleven, and play, pay tribute to the bravery for the first responders and our military personnel. This is a very somber occasion, and I invite the public to come and participate. Our Vision 2040 Refresh Community Forums are kicking off, so join us at one of the energizing, hands-on community forums where you and your neighbors can come together and share ideas, spark conversations, and provide valuable input that will help to guide Capella's future. Our first one is tomorrow morning's Wednesday, September tenth, at eleven-thirty, excuse me, eleven-thirty at the Cosby Library. Then we also have one Wednesday, September tenth, at six PM at the Cosby Library, and then another one on Thursday, September eleventh, at ten-thirty AM at Life Safety Park. Whether you've lived here for years or just recently joined the community, your perspective is essential. Feedback provided by the community will have a direct impact on the city's future, and so please make your voice count and be part of Capella's history. Last item is the grapevine grape stomp is this weekend, and there is a mayoral challenge from Mayor Tate to all the neighboring mayors, and so we have accepted the challenge. Councilmember Mark Hill and I will be stomping grapes on, on Saturday
Nice, yes.
At eleven AM. Now, I understand there's something of a competition with this, and it came to my attention that Councilmember Neves and Prem Kumar were the, our representatives last year, so we're certainly looking for some training for them because they ended up with a best-in-show or something like that, so.
We didn't do that great, Mayor, so Capella can only go up from here.
All right, so this is a friendly competition honoring grapevines traditions, so we're looking forward to that, sort of.
Okay, item number sixteen, public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share some news from Capella I S D. After a lengthy process of gathering stakeholder input, a nationwide search that included the review of forty-five applicants and a comprehensive interview process of the top applicants, the Capella I S D Board of Trustees is pleased to announce Dr. Leanne Shivers as the lone finalist for superintendent of Capella I S D School District, so we're excited to, that our school So we're excited to, that our school district neighbors have selected their lone finalist and look forward to meeting Dr. Shivers and having her lead our district.
Thank you very much. That's very exciting. It's been a very long process. Therefore, item number seventeen, there being no further business before this, council, we are adjourned at nine-thirty-six PM.